Good evening. Folks, if you could please take your seats so we can get started. Thank you very much. Mr. McAlpine, Mr. Saleen. Thank you, thank you. Good evening. Sadly, we did not have the jazz band to warm us up this evening, and I apologize for that. But before we start, as you can see, we're going to be testing out electronic voting this evening. And Greg Alexander from Turning Technologies is here to introduce his product. And we'll go through that after a few preliminary remarks when we start with Article One. But first, I want to make some acknowledgements. A few of our town officials will be leaving us this year. And on behalf of the town meeting, the legislative body, I'd like to thank them very much and take a few moments for each. They've put in countless hours of volunteer labor and conscientious service. And the first one we wanted to acknowledge is Sarah Player. Sarah is stepping down from the school committee, a lifelong resident of Ipswich. Sarah attended Ipswich Public Schools. She's coached youth soccer for years. For the last six years, has served on the school committee. In addition to serving in various subcommittees, budget operations, FEPI's instructional, school building committee, she's also chair of the school committee for the last two years. In that capacity, she oversaw the new grade school project, which failed last year. Surely, we all remember how divisive that was. And those who supported it know the dedication she brought to the cause. And even those that opposed it must surely respect her for the commitment and the countless hours she put into it, to say nothing of the blood, sweat, and tears. So on behalf of the town meeting, thank you very much, Sarah. And I know, I now like to recognize Dr. Blake for a couple comments.
I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly acknowledge Sarah Player for her service to the town and schools of Ipswich over the past six years. Prior to my arrival, Sarah had served as an active school committee member for four years, serving on a variety of subcommittees and working diligently to help the people understand the need for the override. Sarah was an active player in the school building project early on, and once elected as the chair two years ago, was a staunch outspoken supporter of combining our elementary schools in hopes of providing our students with the best education possible. During her time as chair, she has faced harsh criticism with grace and dignity by those opposed to the building project. In addition to being the chair, Sarah helped to negotiate the teacher and support staff contracts this past year, and was a member of the budget subcommittee, the special education advisory committee, the common concerns, and the athletics subcommittee. Sarah has skillfully guided the school committee through a rough period of time. It's been a pleasure working with Sarah as the school committee chair, and I'm indebted to her for easing my transition into the Ipswich schools and learning about the community. Sarah, thank you for all you've done to date for the Ipswich Public Schools. I say "to date" because I know that you'll continue to be active in the community, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you. We also have a citation from Brad Hill, House of Representatives, this evening that I'm going to give to Sarah as well.
And the flowers. The flowers. Okay. The next one to acknowledge is Ed Rousher, who's stepping down from the select board. Ed is not able to be with us here tonight, but the select board undoubtedly will present some proclamation of some sort at its next meeting and recognize all his many accomplishments and contributions to the town. And finally, my good friend, Mr. Kraft, who moved to Ipswich in 1970, or 50 years ago next year. And three years later, when his first child was born, he began 47 years of volunteer service to the town of Ipswich. First on the school building needs committee for three years until his second child was born. Next is the moderator's appointment to the finance committee, where he served from 1976 to '09. And during 33 years there, he served as chair any number of times, often two consecutive years. In those years, he had the good fortune to work with Mary Conley, a legend in terms of civic pride and engagement in the community. And most recently, he was a member of the select board for three consecutive three-year terms. In that tenure, he was not only chair of the board three times, but also served as acting manager between Bob Markle and Robin Crosby. And during those 47 years, with the numerous annual and special town meetings, many with rigorous debates over one question or another, in his illustrious career, only twice was he asked to be sit-down by the moderator.[366.31][366.31](laughter) But seriously, Bill Kraft embodies what the people that formed this country believed, that when it comes to the government, the deliberative forces should prevail over the arbitrary, that the greatest menace to freedom is an inert people, and that public discussion is a political duty, which is to say, we are citizen participants, not consumer customers of the government. So Bill, thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Nishan Mutaffee, and I'm the chair of the select board, Ipswich Select Board. I've just got a quick, a couple things to say about Mr. Kraft, and then a proclamation that I'd like to read. Seven years ago, I was fortunate enough to be elected to the Ipswich Select Board. And the first select member I got to sit down with and break some bread with was Mr. Kraft. So we go into his little office, and he says to me, goes, well, he says, now that you've caught the proverbial car, what are you going to do with it? Seven years later, I'm not sure what I'm doing with it, but I'm trying. He has been, the thing that I've admired most about Bill is, not only is his intelligence, but his memory of everything Ipswich. If you want to know about a meeting many years ago, if you want to know about a vote, you want to know about anything, you ask Bill, and he will know the answer to it. And he's not that far off on the specific details. And it's a, it's a, it's a skill I know I don't have, and so I admire it, and I thank you for that. So now that you have let go of the car, the question is, what are you going to do with it?[498.31][498.31](laughter) Enjoy your time off of, off of any of these committees, and thank you for your service. A proclamation by their excellency, the Ipswich Select Board 2019. Whereas William M. Kraft has served the citizens of the town of Ipswich from 1973 to 1975 on the school building needs committee, and whereas William M. Kraft has served the citizens of the town of Ipswich from 1976 to 2010 on the finance committee, and whereas William M. Kraft has served the citizens of the town of Ipswich as a select board member from 2010, and that during his tenure of government service, William M. Kraft has served as select board chair three times, including during the appointment of two town managers, and whereas William M. Kraft has served as interim town manager and as the chair of the audit committee throughout, including various other committee assignments, and whereas William M. Kraft has consistently strived to make decisions in the best interests of the citizens of the town of Ipswich, and whereas William M. Kraft has never wavered from his love or sense of service to the town of Ipswich. Now, therefore, we, Nishan D. Mutaffee and Chair, William D. Whitmore, Vice Chair, Edward B. Rousher, and Linda Alexin, do hereby honor and commend William M. Kraft and urge all citizens of the town of Ipswich to take cognizance of this fine individual.[578.41][578.41](applause)
I'd more like to, excuse me, I'd like to now recognize Mr. Kraft.
I think I get two minutes. I want to, want to thank both the town moderator and the board of, the select board for their kind words. I've always thought of service on various town committees as a wonderful opportunity to get to know the town and to get to know some of the nicest and most interesting people. I'm proud to be a part of Ipswich and look forward to maybe causing at least some of these people a rough time in the near future. But again, thank you all tonight. Really appreciate it.
Okay. And before we begin, I want to recognize and thank Senator Tar and Representative Hill for bringing the proclamations and all the good work and service that they give to our community. Thank you very much.[657.23][657.23](applause) So unless there's an objection, I'm going to invite the non-voters into the hall, please. And while they're coming in, would you please stand and follow me with a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of Ipswich, one nation under God, indivisible,天地一體，萬物皆一體. Okay. So a quorum being present, and I'll call the 2019 Annual Town Meeting of the Town of Ipswich to order. Before we get started, please take note of the locations of the duly-marked emergency exits, those in the front and back, and so that, for easy access. We, the clerk this evening, has given me the return of service, which we will make part of the record from the constable. The tellers this evening are Isaac Ross, Michael Johnson, Irene Josephson, Jeremy Hathaway, Maggie Thomas, Mark Alman, and Pat Smith. And they've been duly sworned. And Mark Casello is with Mr. Alman in the pit to run the PowerPoint presentation. Tonight, we have 25 articles on the warrant, so I hope we can finish tonight. If not, we'll adjourn until tomorrow night. A quick review of the process. Most of you are regulars, but I just want to run through this quickly. Town meeting comes together because the selectmen issue the warrant, which is the agenda. The agenda items are called articles. In order to consider them, the sponsor starts with what's called the main motion, and from there, the process can go in a number of directions. If there's an amendment, we'll try and get it up on the PowerPoint. Mr. Casello in the pit will assist you to that. Beyond that, here's a recap of the rules of the road. Unless there's an objection, I will allow non-residents to speak. Anyone wishing to speak must state his or her name and address. If you want to speak, please come down to the microphones. If he anticipates, you can come down early so we don't have gaps waiting. It makes things go faster. I will not recognize anyone otherwise than asked to be recognized. Will not consider anyone who cries out, catcalls, out of order. There are pro and con microphones that are marked, and you can see them. The pre-debate presentations, about sponsors, are five minutes. Debate is two minutes. And that's it. So let's start with Article One. Article One is a consent calendar. Mr. Mutaffee. Thank, I forgot about that. Okay. So around, when you checked in, you got your card, and you got a little clicker. It will not open your garage door, it will not run your television, and I don't think the Russians have the code to it yet. But Greg Alexander from Turning Technology is here to give us an introduction and explain how it works. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am Greg Alexander. I'm from Turning Technologies, and you will be voting electronically tonight. Everyone, everyone, every registered voter has a device. You will simply press 1 or A for yes, 2 or B for no on each vote. You can, you can change your mind as many times as you like. You can press the buttons as many times as you like. You're only submitting one vote. It will be the last vote that you cast before the polling is closed. And we do have a couple of samples for you to be able to test out here. I do want to remind folks, as the moderator just mentioned, these will not open your garage door, or they won't help you change the channel on your TV or anything. There are bins at the end, or buckets at the doors here, so as you exit, if you'll just toss it in there, that way we can collect them at the end of the evening. So if you want to go to the next slide here, this just gives you an indication of what the device will look like when you cast a vote. A successful yes vote, you press the one button, you'll see the light blink green, and you will see 1 slash A indicated on the LCD screen. When you cast a no vote, you'll press the 2 or the B button, it will show 2 slash B in the LCD screen, and you'll also see a green light indicating. If you are pressing a button other than 1 or 2, it's not a valid vote, you're going to see a circle with a line through it, and you won't see the green light. So again, we have a couple of samples. You can go ahead and advance. So when, when the moderator calls for the vote, the voting slide will appear. Again, will the Red Sox win the World Series? You're going to press 1 if you think yes, you're going to press 2 if you think no. You can see down in the lower-left corner, the green box indicates polling is open. There are 160, it's coming up quickly here, but you can see the number of votes that have been cast. The moderator will say, let's go ahead and wrap up our, get your votes locked in, and at that point, there will be a 10-second countdown timer indicated on the screen. When that timer gets to zero, the polling will close. At that point, you can no longer change your vote. When it gets to zero, polling closes. Now he'll advance, and you'll be able to see what you think. There you go. 147 of you think they will, 78 think they won't.[998.13][998.13](laughter)
All right. Would you 78 people please leave?[1003.01][1003.01](laughter) Come on. Come on.
Which apparently is not accurate.
That's out of order.[1011.13][1011.13](laughter)
Go ahead and advance to the next one. The land on which the town of Ipswich was founded was originally inhabited by Indian tribes who called the area Agawam. Do you think that that is true or false? So you'll press 1 if you think that's accurate, you'll press 2 for no if you think that is not accurate.
Okay. So let's practice with this one. All right, everyone's voting, so now I'm going to say, and we'll use this. Okay, Mark, let's, let's wind this up. Let's give him 10 seconds. After 10 seconds, all right? So he turned on the 10-second clock. Now it's when you have, it's 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. Okay. And then, and then I'll say to the clerk, I declare the moderation passes 223 to 15. Was that right or wrong? Yeah. Okay. So that's the way it works. Just a couple things on this. So, so this is the first time we're using this. I'm not going to use it every time. I'm certainly going to use it on the two-thirds votes, because that's where it gets dicey, and I have to call it, you know, it's, sometime I'm in doubt, and we have to count it. On some of these that are rote, routine, it'd be faster just to raise the cards, okay? And this is common, the other moderators have started using this. They'll say, they don't use it all the time. So if, if you see that sometimes I don't use it, I'll just say your cards, and that's why you have your cards. Another thing is, it's conceivable that if a couple comes in, and they're, say, husband and wife, and they're sitting together, and they're using it, and then one says, I'll go home and watch the kids, you take my clicker and vote for me. Let's not do that. You know, this is the honest system. And if you see someone doing that, tell one of the tellers, okay? Because that's, that's not cool. Okay? So with that, now we can go to Article One. Mr. Mutaffee.
Nishan Mutaffee, 33 Birch Lane, Select Board. I move to set the salaries of elected officials, transfer funds from the electric light department, accept reports from committees, and continue listed committees as standing committees of town meeting, amend section 15-29 of the general bylaws by adding Subpart L to establish the Crane Beach Maintenance Fund, establish expenditures limitations of revolving funds, and to appropriate the sum of $440,336 under the authority of Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, and to authorize a select board to borrow in anticipation of state aid for such projects. All is set forth in Article One of the warrant for this town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So this is a consent calendar, and the idea with these, these things is, they put a whole laundry list of, you know, what they expect to be uncontested matters, that no one would, there's no debate over, so they can get them all done at once. And so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to go through this, and if anyone, any one person contests it, we'll vote on it, okay? If you, if you, I'll call them out by number and letter, and if you have an objection or if you want to vote no, just say "hold" and come down to the microphone over here, okay? Now, I already know that one of them is going to call "hold," and that's the Crane Beach Maintenance Fund. And you see that the FinCom voted to support everything unanimously except for that one. So we're going to, definitely going to hold that one, all right? But let me go through the other ones. If anyone has any question or opposition to any of them, say "hold" and come down to the microphone, and we'll debate it. And if no one does, we'll vote on all those and block, and then we'll go to the Crane Beach Fund. Okay? All right. So number one, to fix the annual salary and compensation. Two, to transfer funds from the electric light department. Three, to hear reports. Four, to amend the bylaws. Hold. Okay, we're going to hold that one. And now the revolving funds. A, the town war fund for $12,000. Beautification fund for 5. Public health for 5. Sanitary housing fund for 7. Food inspection for 25. Council on Aging for 100. Historical commission for 5. Town Hall Custodial Service for 20. Shelflift Enhancement Fund for $15,000. Vehicle Electric Charge Fund for $1,000. Health reimbursement for $85,000. Amend the action taken on the May 2018 Annual Town Meeting, and to appropriate funds from the Highway Improvement Authority. No objection? Okay, I declare that those passed by unanimous consent. Now, we're going to go to the "hold" one. The finance committee had a problem with the Crane Beach Maintenance Fund. So Janice?
Janice Clemens-Skelton, Chair, Ipswich Finance Committee. In an unusual turn of events, the finance committee actually is not supporting this article unanimously as written, but instead has taken the position that we do support unanimously all those indicated in Article One, including number 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and 7. Our reason for requesting removal of Subpart L is that we have, over the course of the last few years, been working towards minimizing or even retiring some of our revolving funds in an effort to move decision-making back into the operating and capital budgets. We believe that creating a new revolving fund, as described in subsection L, actually count, is counterintuitive to what we've been trying to do, and unnecessarily balkanizes the budget. So we encourage town meeting to pass the consent, consent calendar with the deletion of Subpart L, and move the Crane's Beach Maintenance Planning into either the operating or capital budgets.
Well, you can't move it, you can just oppose it. So you're, you're encouraging the town to vote against L?
Correct, which would put that process back into the operating and capital budgets.
Which is where it is right now?
Yes.
Okay. So it's, no change. Okay. Anyone else care to be heard on this? Yes? Yes, absolutely. Mr. Moreno.
Anthony Moreno, Town Manager. The select board had asked to put this, create this revolving fund. What happened was, is we have on the capital plan approximately $110,000 to replace the boardwalk. For any people who don't know, the boardwalk, well, the first boardwalk there by the town parking lot, is owned by the town. We're responsible for the maintenance of it. Now, over the year, we collect money for Crane Beach stickers, as everybody knows, to the tune of approximately $132,000 a year. We also have a pilot program with the trustees, which brings in, based on their revenues, this year brought in $150,000. What the select board wants to do with this fund is to set aside a small amount of money every year, let the funds build up, so we can have money to replace, take the boardwalk off the capital plan, and have the funds to set aside for the boardwalk. What we don't want to do, and what the select board does not want to do, is end up having the boardwalk to be in competition with the entire capital plan from the general fund. So, you know, somebody else or another board, this town meeting could basically say, well, we don't want to fix the boardwalk this year, we want to do other capital items. Well, we have a dedicated funding source via the stickers and the pilot program to maintain and fix that boardwalk, and we just wanted to allocate a small amount of those funds, possibly 20,000 to 30,000 a year, let it build up. And it's not something we have to do every year, as it's a revolving fund, we can fund it as we choose. So that's what the select board wants to do, and they would ask you to support this article. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Champion, are you in support or opposed?
I'm in support of having what Town Manager's recommended. But a question. We have a 1953 agreement between the Crane family, town of Ipswich, and the trustees of reservations. It's rather lengthy. Does it require the town to have these maintenance of, and safety that would, might, might not happen if, as Town Manager just said, funds were taken away that had been generated from Crane Beach revenues?
Well, but the question before us is whether to amend the bylaw to take these funds from the permits and the stickers to put them somewhere. What you're talking about is not, not germane to this.
It's an obligation that Mr. Moreno just said, that Select Board is recommending that we keep. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else care to be heard? All right, so we'll go to a vote. This requires a simple majority. And let's use the clickers. All right? Are they all plugged in, all charged up and everything? Okay. We're, all right, okay, fair enough. On the consent calendar, I've already declared that we passed everything except the Crane Beach Maintenance Fund. Okay? We're now voting only on that. Whether to do what Mr. Moreno would like you to do, as opposed to what the FinCom is Okay. So yes is to vote yes to establish the fund, and 2 is no, don't.[1660.26][1660.26](laughter) And if you, if it doesn't pass, then the funds stay going where they're going. There's no change.[1670.01][1670.01](laughter) Okay? All right, all right, hold on a second. Let me explain it again. The only thing that we're voting on is the Crane Beach Maintenance Fund. And the motion is to establish, to amend the bylaws by adding this Part L to establish this maintenance fund, as described in the warrant. And what it says is, the funds derived from the sale of the stick, the permits, and the trustee of the reservation pilot agreement, to be expended by the town manager or the select board for maintenance and repairs of town-owned parking and pedestrian facilities at the beach for next year and subsequent years. So if you vote yes, then you're saying, yes, change the bylaw and do that. And if you vote no, you don't, and nothing changes.[1722.76][1722.76](laughter) Yes, correct. Yes. Mr. Moreno is in favor, and Ms. Skelton is opposed. Okay? All those in favor, please hit 1. And those opposed, please hit 2. All right, we're getting up there. I'll give, Mark, you want to start winding up? We'll give them 10 seconds. So you have 10 seconds to vote. Okay, voting is closed. And I declare the measure passes 175 to 65. Yep. Okay. Article 2. Ms. Skelton, from the Finance Committee.
I move to appoint Walter Hartford to the Finance Committee for a term of three years.
Is there a second? Second over here, from Ms. Alexin. Okay. Does anyone else want to nominate anyone else? Lots of volunteer work, lots of numbers. Okay. Okay. Ms. Skelton?
Shocking that there aren't a whole lot-
Shocking that there aren't a whole lot of hands going up here. So, this will be Walter's second term with the Finance Committee. Over the last three years, he has served diligently, and has added both a depth and a breadth to the committee, that we are eternally grateful for. His financial modeling skills, his willingness to work closely with our Town Finance Director, and to pretty much model out any idea we can come up with, has been a breath of fresh air. I strongly encourage you to support us in retaining him on the committee this year.
So, anyone care to be heard? Then we'll go to a vote. Let's use the clickers again, alright? 1 for yes, Mr. Walter Hartford gets another term, and 2 no. Okay, voting is open. And, ready? There you go, okay. It's counting up, 147, alright? Let's wind it up, Mark, let's give them 10 seconds. Alright, voting is closed. I declare it passes 191 to 10. Congratulations. Article 3, Mr. Mutafian.
Nishan Mutafian, 33 Birch Lane, Select Board. I move to appropriate the sum of $26,401,824 for the FY 2020 municipal budget to be expended as follows. General Government: $709,219. Finance: $1,052,329. Planning: $570,664. Public Safety: $5,372,544. Public Works: $4,687,133. Community and Cultural Services: $1,526,072. Benefits and Other Miscellaneous: $5,750,361. General Fund Total is $19,668,321. Sorry, Water Department: $3,914,948. Waste Water Department: $2,728,655. Sanitation, Solid Waste Recycling: $89,000. For a total municipal budget of $26,401,824. And the following sums to be raised and appropriated or transferred to the fund of FY 2020 Budget Septic Loan Program: $17,865. Excuse me, Tourism Account: $2,000. Debt Premium: $1,931. Overlay Surplus: $125,000. Waterways Improvements: $102,052. Raise and Appropriate: $19,419,473. Water Receipts: $3,798,106. Water Reserves: $116,842. Waste Water Receipts: $2,434,072. Waste Water Reserves: $294,583. Sanitation, Solid Waste and Recycling: $89,900. Total Funding Sources: $26,401,824. And to authorize the town to enter into lease purchase contracts for equipment, having a term of five years or less.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Craft. Okay. Ms. Skelton, a recommendation from the FinCom, please?
Sure. The Finance Committee is pleased to unanimously support this budget. We, to give you a sense of what goes into the making of a budget of this size, we had 22 meetings over the course of about three and a half, four months. We worked diligently with both the Select Board and the School Committee to bring you this budget. No stone has gone unturned, no question has been unasked, and we would like to graciously thank both the Select Board and the School Committee for welcoming us into the process, and allowing us the ability to do what we do best, which is ask the questions, and bring you a budget that gives you the highest value for your tax dollar.
Thank you very much. The Select Board, as FinCom and the School Committee are all unanimously in support. Anyone care to be heard? Mr. Gogan? Article 3, I haven't even heard from you. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Phil Gogan, Chief Counsel. I have an amendment I'd like to present.
Can I say it, please?
Well, the moderator's gone back up. I'd like to have you look at the back of my head. And the front? There are no horns in the back here. I'm not the devil.
Okay, just to let you know, they're working on a slide to put it up on the screen, but the motion, Mr. Gogan's motion, is to amend the main motion under Article 3, to reduce the increase from 3.14% to only 2%. So I take that just across the board, right? Not line item by line item. Okay? So they're gonna put that up on the slide here, and why don't you tell us why we should, we should reduce the increase from 3.14% to 2%?
Good. Thank you, Ms. Moderator, I appreciate that.
And Mark, you wanna?
With the power point there?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Folks, you all came here tonight to vote, and during the course of the year, you've said to yourself many times, "We have to cut back." The only way you're gonna get them to cut back, just like you do at home, is to tell them to cut back. And this is one way that you can do it. I was going to try and go for the whole thing, but I think we can do that, finish it next year. Next year is gonna be brutal. There's so many things coming down the pipe, that you don't hear about. Fortunately, unfortunately, I do go to most of the meetings, and I have a very good idea of what's coming down. You've got water problems, you've got damn problems. Don't have to tell you about the roads. We have an outfit called Dude Solutions. Dude Solutions is a company that just comes in and analyzes, takes, and there's two cases. They're gonna check on all the buildings in the town, that, that the town, am I losing volume here? Okay, thank you. They're gonna be checking the buildings, they're going through the buildings now, and find out what's needed. They're doing the same thing for the school, but that's called School Dudes, and I don't know how that one's working, but basically it's the same thing. You're not gonna find out that the roof needs repair, because after it's actually leaking, and people are putting barrels where the leaks are, flat roofs are hard to find, find the leaks, and then they take a picture of it, and run down to the newspaper and show you the roof is leaking. Well, this Dude Solutions, or School Dude is gonna be able to project this. It's not gonna wait until you're right, it's happening, and find out that it's happening. Just like your roof at home, you know it needs leak to be fixed, and you don't wait, and then have it come tumbling down. You fix it, you don't let it leak. And there's an override coming, and that's next year, it's gonna add to your dollars. You gotta fire a police complex, that's definitely needed.
Thank you, Mr. Gogan. Okay. So, does anyone wanna be heard? So first of all, his motion to amend the main motion, the budget that Mr. Mutafian read, is up there. He wants to reduce the overall increase from 3.14% to 2%. Anyone care to be heard on this?
Ms. Moderator, can I have a couple more minutes?
No, you may not.
Anybody in the audience?
No, you may not, sir. Sir, you're out of order. Please have a seat. Ms. Skelton?
Yep, yep, yep. Okay, just to add a little more information here, for the purpose of decision-making, if this were to pass, we would be looking at cutting $390,000 out of the municipal budget, and $495,000 from the schools. I won't deign to predict where that money would come from, but it would be a significant and draconian cut to the budget at this point in the process.
Anyone else care to be heard? So we'll go to a vote, and we'll use the cards this time. All those in favor, please raise your cards.
I'm sorry.
On the amendment, on Mr. Gogan's amendment, that is, to reduce the budget by 1.14% of increase, right? 3.14% instead of 2. Okay, that's what we're voting on, is Mr. Gogan's amendment. And we will use the cards. So, and this is a simple majority vote. So, all those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed, please raise your cards. I declare the motion fails. That being said, we will now go to a vote on the main motion. Mr. Mutafian's, who drew the short straw and had to read all those numbers, his budget, the main motion, okay? And we'll use the cards again. All those in favor of passing the main motion, Article 3, the budget, please raise your cards. Those opposed, I declare the motion carries, by a majority vote. Article 4.
Sarah Player, 45 Mile Lane, School Committee. Article 4, I move to transfer $125,000 from the Overlay Surplus Account, to transfer $380,754,000 from the Education Stabilization Fund, and to raise and appropriate the sum of $33,696,47 for a total of $33,575,401, to fund the fiscal year 2020 school budget, as set forth in Article 4 of the warrant for this Town Meeting.
Is there a second? Mr. Hopping, thank you. Player, please.
So can we put the pie chart up? The next slide, thank you. So before you is a pie chart that represents the school budget. Our biggest investment, you can see, is in our faculty and staff, approximately 75% of our budget. Our expenses constitute about 15% of our budget, include things like instructional materials, utilities, things like that. The debt component is about 9%, and includes the middle school, high school debt, previously bonded school renovations, and debt from the wind turbine. The School Committee unanimously supports this article, and we ask for the town's support for the school budget.
Thank you very much. Ms. Howe, from Ms. Jones, excuse me, from the FinCom, recommendation?
Tammy Jones, One Seaview Finance Committee. Finance Committee is pleased with the improvement in the Ipswich Public Schools in FY 19, and expects this progress to continue. In FY 20, the school's operating budget will be up, will be $33.6 million, up 3.79% from last year, and in line with the school's five-year plan developed four years ago. The School Department represents 63% of the total appropriated operating budget for the town. This override that was passed a number of years ago, has allowed for improved learning environments in all school building, and maintenance of appropriate class sizes. The elementary schools continue to engage their students in active learning environments, both in their STEAM studio and classrooms. The middle school continues to expand and refine its successful co-teaching model, project-based learning, while preparing students for the challenges of high school. And the high school continues to promote project-based learning and certificate tracks, while developing career paths that will provide interested students opportunities to explore their intended careers through custom curriculum options. Of special note, the Ipswich High School has an exceptionally low dropout rate, with 99% of the students graduating within five years, and 93% acceptance rate to two- and four-year programs, including most top-tier schools. The Finance Committee unanimously supports this budget.
Thank you. Anyone care to be heard? The Select Board is, as well, unanimous in support. So we'll go to a vote on Article 4, this requires...
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
There's a question?
Okay.
Carl Gardner, Nine Woods Lane?
Yes, what's your question?
I'm interested to understand what, if any, plans this, the School Committee has, relative to maintenance and repair of the systems and facilities at the two elementary schools. It's my understanding that on an annual basis, the Mass School Building Authority has an accelerated repair program that school districts can participate in, and I was assured that the town would be addressing the issues with both schools in that category of use, whether, with or without these funds being sought out from the state. Can you give me an update on that, and let me know, let us, let Town Meeting know what your plans are for that type of work?
So what you wanna know is what the long-term building plans are for major improvements and repairs?
Yes.
Okay. Can someone fill us in on that? Mr. Superintendent?
Good evening. Yes, at this point, we, Mr. Gogan earlier pointed out the School Dude analysis, that's a program that we've brought into the, to the town and the school system to look at all of our systems, all infrastructure in terms of our buildings. So right now, all of that data is, is coming in, and once we have that analysis complete, we'll make some determinations and prioritize what needs to happen for each of our buildings, both on the school side and the town side. We do have money in the capital projects budget to do some of the most immediately needed repairs to some of the buildings, to, to keep them functioning for the time being.
Okay, Ms. Offen, you have a question?
I have a question. Is there somebody on one of the boards who could give us a very quick synopsis of the turbine?
The turbine?
The turbine, is it operational? Has it, have we seen the benefits from having voted to do that several years ago, and what is the status of it right now?
Alright, we're happy to get Mr. Whitten. You wanna tell us about the turbines, and any deals you might know off the top of your head?
Sure. The turbine is operational right now, and we have, in our capital budget, we have a $20,000 set aside for a gearbox replacement. It's a $140,000 capital item. We're doing $20,000 a year at a time. Thank you.
Sir?
My name is Bill Wasserman, 193 Argilla Road, and I really have just a point of order. I believe it falls under that category. When Mr. Gogan brought his amendment forward, it was, could only apply to the municipal budget. budget. Ms. Skelton gave us figures, Rico, reporting on what it would cost to both the school committee and the municipal budget. That was inappropriate, and I believe, Ms. Morata, you should have caught it.
No, no, I don't think so. She wasn't talking about the school budget.
She mentioned the school budget as costing another $300 and some thousand dollars that we would be taking away from the school budget.
Right.
If we pass...
Mr. Gogan's amendment did not speak to the school budget.
I'm sorry?
No. I missed that. You're absolutely right. It did not.
So we owe Mr. Gogan a straight apology.
Okay. Anyone care to be heard on this? Mr. Gogan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Wasserman. Phil Gogan, King Fisher Road. Ms. Morata, I have another amendment. This is regarding the school.
All right. Can I say it, please? Mr. Gogan's motion, articulated for them while they put the slide up, is essentially parallel to the motion he made to amend the main motion for the municipal budget, only in the school budget, he wants to reduce the overall spending from a 2.5% increase to 1.25, so cut it in half, the increase. Okay? And they're gonna get that up there. Mr. Gogan, we'll hear you in three minutes. Mark? The clock? Mr. Gogan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Folks, you can't just sit there and say, "Okay, okay, okay, be otherwise." You're just gonna be right back here again next year, and you're gonna be hit with more taxes. And believe me, I have put a lot of time into doing research on some of the expenses from the school, and it's not good. You got the middle, high school, middle school and high school that we're in now, I've got on my desk about 400 pages of invoices. Of that, probably 30, 40% of it is for roof leaks. Ladies and gentlemen, the roof leaks, half of those, are for this building right here. In other words, they're taking care of the roofs as the leaks are occurring, and that's the way it should be, not let it go on and on and on so that you have to have a flat roof repaired. There has to be an end someplace, and you folks, you're the taxpayers, you're in charge, you're the bosses, this is the legislation. You can do it. All you have to do is say, "No." It's that simple. I've got four pages full of expenses coming down the road, and you haven't heard about them. You've got your chance tonight. In fact, it's the only chance that you'll get. You're gonna be seeing it in your, they don't tell you what it's gonna cost you unless you ask them. You're gonna be seeing it in July, when you get your tax bill, and you're gonna say, "Oh, I should have said something." You're gonna walk out of here tonight saying, "Why did I go there if I'm just being a puppet?" Yes, 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 yes. No, it's not that. You've got this now as a guide. You can say, "No," nobody's gonna look at you and say, "What did you vote?" This is the time to say, "No." And if you read Facebook at all, and the whole 10 years I've been doing, the, you can't, over and over again, we'll wait for the town meetings and say, "I'm gonna go to town..."
Thank you, Mr. Gogan. Your time has expired.
Thank you, Ms. Morata. Thank you, folks.
Please have a seat. Okay. Ms. Player from the School Committee.
Sarah Player, School Committee. We estimate that Mr. Gogan's cut would be about $412,000, which could be six or seven staff, six or seven, I'm sorry, six or seven full-time teachers. So doing kind of random cuts like this to the budget is scary to the school committee. We work on the budget for months. We bring the budget to the FinCom in a really thoughtful, organized way, and to have kind of random cuts coming across the board is scary for the school district and for the students. So I caution, I caution town meeting in doing kind of random across-the-board cuts in this nature.
Ms. Jones?
Tammy Jones, FinCom. The Finance Committee is not in favor of this amendment. This has been a very well-vetted budget that we have gone over at length, and the FinCom supports the budget as it is written. We do not support this random cut.
Okay. Thank you. You have a question?
Ralph Williams, Nine Nags Head Road. If I'm remembering correctly from reading a half an hour ago from the Finance Board's paper, they said the increase for the school budget was more than 3%. What is the right number? Two and a half or three?
Okay, that's a fair question. Did, it's what? It's 3.14%?
So the motion doesn't apply?
Well, oh, okay. Anyone else care to be heard on the motion to amend the main motion? That is, to cut the budget. So we'll go to a vote. We'll use the cards. All those in favor of Mr. Gogan's motion to amend the main motion to cut the percentage of increase to 1.25%, in favor, please raise your cards. Those opposed, I declare the motion fails. Article, oh, no, so we'll now go to the main motion on Article IV, which is the school budget. All those in favor of passing the school budget as presented to you, please raise your cards. Those opposed, I declare the motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Article V, Ms. Needler.
Pauv Needler, Two Cortlandt Lane, School Committee.
Well, they're all the same.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $455,189 to pay the town share of the ensuing year's annual operating and debt service expenses of the Whittier Regional Vocational Technical High School.
Second, please. Okay.
Ipswich is a member district of Whittier, and as such, we are responsible to cover our share of tuition, transportation, capital expenses, and other educational fees for our students attending Whittier Regional High School. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education sets the annual tuition rates at vocational schools. The tuition rate at Whittier for next year is $16,651 per student, including transportation and fees, and the total assessment, which includes capital assessment, is $18,966 per student. Currently, 24 Ipswich students attend Whittier, and five are expected to graduate. There are eight applicants for next year. Out of those, five have been accepted so far and four have confirmed. $455,189 will cover Ipswich's portion of the Whittier Technical School's 2019 operating budget. The school committee supports this article unanimously.
Thank you. The Select Board is also unanimously in support. Finance Committee?
Tammy Jones, Finance Committee, One Seaview Road. The Finance Committee unanimously supports the diversity of educational opportunities that Whittier Regional High provides to the schoolchildren of Ipswich. And please note that these numbers are based on what we, it's our expected enrollment from Ipswich to Whittier. The final number will be, the numbers will be adjusted when enrollment is finalized in the fall of 2019. Again, the Finance Committee unanimously supports this.
Okay. Anyone care to be heard? Why don't you come on down? Anyone else care to be heard?
I can speak loud enough here.
No. Come down to the microphone, please. Come on down to the microphone, please. No. I will not recognize you from there. You're out of order. If you want to speak, come down to the microphone. I said that when we started. Are you in support or opposed to this?
That's a neutral opportunity for me, just to speak.
Okay.
I thank you for my time. Through what method would the $455,189 be raised?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Through what method?
Through what method?
Yes.
Taxation, to raise and appropriate. Okay? Okay. Anyone else care to be heard? So we'll go to a vote. This requires a simple majority. We'll use the cards. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Those opposed, I declare the motion carries. Article VI, Essex County Tech Institute. Ms. Needler?
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $235,707 to pay the town share of the ensuing year's annual operating and debt service expenses of the Essex County Technical Institute.
Second, from Mr. Nyland. Okay. Ms. Needler, please.
Ipswich is responsible to cover our share of tuition and transportation for our students attending Essex County Technical Institute, formerly known as Essex Aggie. Again, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education sets the tuition rates at vocational schools. This year's tuition and transportation is estimated at a total cost per student of $17,059. Currently, seven Ipswich students attend this technical high school, and three Ipswich students are expected to graduate in June. Five students have been accepted for next year, with four confirmed to attend so far. $235,707 will cover Ipswich's portion of the 2019 operating budget at Essex County Technical Institute. The school committee supports this article unanimously.
Ms. Jones?
Okay. Again, the Finance Committee unanimously supports this article, and as noted on the last article, this present budget number is based on predicted enrollment and will be adjusted when the actual enrollment number is confirmed in the fall of 2019.
Okay. Anyone else care to be heard? So this is a simple majority, and all three boards are unanimously in support. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed, I declare the motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Okay, Article VII, transferring funds from the Educational Stabilization Fund. Mr. Nyland?
Carl Nyland, 34 Brownville Ave., member of the School Committee. I move to transfer the sum of $219,118 from the FY 2019 school budget to the Education Stabilization Fund.
Okay, second? Second by Ms. Player. Carl?
If we can move on to the next slide?
Next slide? He's got a couple slides here.
So probably, as you're familiar now, we talk about this at all the annual town meetings. The Educational Stabilization Fund was created as part of the original agreement, put together when we assembled the 2015 override request. It was passed and approved by a town meeting in the fall of 2015, and its function is, sort of acts as a bank, in a sense, allowing the school committee to balance its budget over time by depositing funds in the early years of the override budget and withdrawing then some of the funds later in the years. And the net effect is really what the name of the account indicates, which is it stabilizes our budget over time, and what it practically allows is it avoids the schools having to come back for annual override requests that would otherwise be required. In terms of a progress report, and you've heard us talk about this in the past, when we put the original override agreement together, the commitment was to have the stabilization fund and the override budget last for five years. The good news is that through good budgeting practices, we've been able to extend that budget. We're now into a seventh year, and we'll do everything we can in our power to extend that beyond. The current balance, which I think is actually on the next slide, is $2,200,000 roughly. And I wanted to indicate, if you can read the chart that's shown up there, there are two lines. The bottom line shows the deposits over the five years of the override budget that we planned for originally, shows the balances each year. The top line shows what we've actually been able to do. And so the good news in all of this is that we've been able to bank funds, additional funds, in the stabilization account that will allow us to prevent or delay the day when another override will need to be requested. And it's worth pointing out that without that effort, this year would be the, this coming year would be the last year of the override, and we'd be looking for an override request the year after. But instead, we can tell you that we have at least a couple more years before that day may come to pass. And I'd just like to recognize the work of the administrative team, both at the central office, our finance director and superintendent, and the rest of the team there, and all the building administrators, as well as faculty and staff, because they are the ones that make this possible through their diligence and their, their conservative budgeting practices. So I urge you to support this.
Okay. Okay, okay, please. Now applause for debate. Ms. Jones?
Finance Committee unanimously supports the transfer of FY19 appropriated budget funds to the Education Stabilization Fund.
Thank you. The Select Board's unanimous as well. Anyone care to be heard? Mr. Gogan?
Thank you, Mr. Morata. Phil Gogan, King Fisher Road. I'd like to know, how official is this?
How official is that?
Yes.
That's the Finance Committee's report to the town meeting.
Right.
Right. What's your question?
The question is, there are no figures in here. Otherwise, I probably would have generated some questions for you.
Okay.
But it says, "To transfer available funds from year 2019." There are no dollar figures in here whatsoever.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
No charts, no guides, no direction.
Okay.
So I would say that this is out of order. I don't even know if they have $219,000 left over, or they're looking for $219,000.
If they didn't have $219,000, they wouldn't be putting it into the piggy bank. All right? That's what they're doing. Anyone else care to be heard on this?
Well, I'm not through here.
Well, if you have a question, please let me know and put it to me.
I'd like to know how legitimate this is and how legal it is.
It's legitimate and it's legal.
Without figures in it, how can it be?
Ms. Skelton, you want to unravel this pretzel?
Janice Clemens-Skelton, Finance Committee Chair. The way the annual Finance Committee report to town meeting is created is we start with the warrant, and upon the warrant, the motions are made, and then the Finance Committee comments on that. This article came through, so it was posted on the warrant without those figures, and the figures were not included in the motion. So as a committee, we do not create articles or motions. We simply report back to the voters on our opinions of the articles and motions that are created.
Thank you, Ms. Skelton. Appreciate that.
Okay.
I still maintain that this is not legal, and it should not be on the...
You are out of order, sir. Please have a seat. Okay, so we'll go to the main motion on Article VII. As you can see, all three boards are unanimous in support. Requires a simple majority, and we'll use the cards. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed, I declare the motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Article VIII, transferring funds. Ms. Zito?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nicole Zito, School Committee, 21 Kimball Ave. I move to transfer the sum of $100,000 from the FY 2019 school budget to the Special Education Reserve Fund.
Second by Mr. Nyland.
In 2016, the state legislature voted to allow local school districts to set up a contingency fund in the event special education costs exceeded the budget in any given year. In November of 2017, at a special town meeting, you, the voters, approved our... you, the voters, approved our request to create a Special Education Reserve Fund by a two-thirds majority. According to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 13E, quote, "The balance in such reserve fund shall not exceed 2% of the annual net school spending of the school district," end quote. For Ipswich in 2019, that means we cannot exceed the amount of $359,183. We are asking to move $100,000 from the appropriated budget into the Special Education Reserve Fund. This will bring the total monies in this fund to $266,466.54. This year, the funds came from a savings we experienced due to an expected outplacement not taking place. The student moved out of Ipswich. Please remember that only special education-related expenses can be paid from this account, including unbudgeted or unanticipated transportation, out-of-district tuition, and other special education services. Funds shall only be distributed from the reserve fund after a majority vote of the school committee and a majority vote of the select board. We cannot always anticipate or control our special education costs given the changing needs and demographics of our student populations. Therefore, it is prudent for us to have some funds that may be accessed anytime during the year and not only at town meeting. The school committee supports this motion, seven to nothing.
Thank you. Ms. Jones from the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee, again Tammy Jones, Finance Committee 1C view. The Finance Committee unanimously supports the transfer of FY 19 appropriated budget funds to the Special Education Reserve Funds as a mean to accommodate unforeseen special education costs. And this is actually very smart planning on behalf, on the, on side of our school committee. They cannot predict when a child sometimes will need to come into our system or will need to be outplaced. And this definitely will help them balance their budget. I strongly suggest that you support this article.
Okay. All three boards are in unanimous in support. Anyone care to be heard? Mr. Gogan? You have three minutes. Oh, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Phil Gogan, Kingfisher Road. I have the same objection on Article eight as on Article seven.
Okay. Do you, but, no, sir, please, do you have a question?
Yes, I have a question.
What is the question?
The question is, why isn't showing on the--
Why is what?
Why aren't the dollar amounts listed?
In the article?
Yes.
Sure, there's a reason. Why don't we put-- Oh, it's in the, it's in the, well, it's in the warrant, certainly. State your question again, please.
All right. My question is, it reads, "Available funds for year 2019", and then there are no dollar amounts showing.
All right. But today, we look at the motion, and the motion is for a specific amount. The article does not need to articulate the dollar amount. The motion does.
Mr. Moderator, I believe that this is out of order. Going by this, all right, there are no figures. This is what people have in their hands, and they're looking.
All right. But we're voting on the motion. We don't vote on the articles. Please have a seat. Anyone else care to be heard? All right, so we'll go to a vote. This requires a simple majority vote. We'll use the cards. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? I declare the motion carries unanimously. Article eight? Nine, excuse me. Capital, Annual Capital Plan. Ms. Alexson.
Linda Alexson, Juniper Street Select Board. I move to transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund the sum of $16,500 to transfer from free cash the sum of, excuse me, $1,025,000 to raise and appropriate the sum of $66,651 to transfer from the overlay surplus account the sum of $50,000 from the fire pumper set aside fund, the sum of $51,084 and from the waterways fund harbor capital, the sum of $50,000 for a total capital spending of $1,259,235 to fund the capital budget as set forth in Article nine of the warrant for this town meeting, and that any remaining funds be transferred to the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Is there a second? Mr. Mutafi? Okay. Linda?
The capital expenditures in this warrant represent priorities for the coming year and have been vetted with town departments and the schools during the budget process. With the recent implementation of the Dudes Solutions Program, we look forward to a full building needs assessment later this year that will enable us to better anticipate and budget for capital needs going forward. The select board was unanimous in recommending this.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dougherty for the Finance Committee? Recommendation?
Mike Dougherty, 10 Appleton Park, Ipswich Finance Committee. The Finance Committee unanimously supports the Annual Capital Plan through the town manager, the superintendent, and all their department heads. These are a list of current priorities to address Mr. Gardner's earlier concern. A little over half a million dollars is going to go towards school improvement. As select person Alexson said, there will be a larger capital plan for FY 2021 as school Dudes Solutions becomes available. But the Finance Committee for the FY 20 capital plan is in full support.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone care to be heard? Mr. Gogan? No. You got a question? Carl?
Yes.
What's the question?
Carl Gardner, Nine Woods Lane. This is directed to the school committee.
Well, it's directed to me. And if it's appropriate, I'll put it to the right person. What's the question?
I mean, it's to the school committee portion of the capital plan, Mr. Moderator. Can someone tell, tell us how much the, the parking, paving, and installation of the straight granite curbing at the pain school cost? And how much, what is covered by the, this additional $15,000 for the Spain, pain school improvements, please?
Chubb, can you answer that?
I cannot answer the first question. That was in the last capital plan, I believe. And, however, I can't answer the $15,000 that's in this cap, capital plan. It's for the heating system and front lobby work. $15,000.
That's the answer, for the heating and--
The heating system and some front lobby work.
So the, the figure for the parking improvements is unknown?
No. Okay, that, we'll give that, Mr. Gogan, let's go to you. Do you have something, the debate?
Thank you, Mr. Mory.
Do you oppose this?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Mory.
You may proceed.
Phil Gogan, Kingfisher Road. Just to answer a quick Carl Gogan's question. I have to put together the bills for the pain building. It's very hard to read because a lot of the bills are in longhand, and they're not concise and not consistent. But so far, I'm up to $115,000 to repair the pain building. That includes the hot tub and granite curbs. My main objection to that, to the whole thing, is there's like four people working in there. $115,000 divided by $7,000, average tax bill, what's it come to? I have other questions, Mr. Moderator. Computer replacement. Pain building repairs and restoration for $15,000. What is that $15,000 going to be, Mr. Moderator? Is it for the new air conditioner? They couldn't get finished for some reason? Although they had already paid $1,900 to get it rewired, and it was put off. Down, dropping down to the wind turbine gearbox set aside. That's $20,000. Is that just the school's third of cost? What's the cost for a gearbox? $20,000? If this, the town is paying for two-thirds, where's the other $40,000? If there is $40,000. Technology equipment, user equipment, $150,000. Folks, divide that by seven. How many houses are paying for that? Roof repairs on Doian, roof repairs on Winthrop, upgrades in the bathroom in Winthrop. Folks, I, I tell you, I've got four, 500 pages. $280 to go in and fix the toilet. And there's many of those. Roof repairs. All right. So now we have roof repair, oh, an upgrade here. I don't know what a P A clock and a bell system is, but I do know what $35,000 is. Question one.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired. Mr. Gardner, you had a question about last year. The paving was $35,000. Okay?
From last year's capital.
Yeah. Okay. So anyone else care to be heard on this? Sir? Name and address, please.
Charlie Pierce, Linden Street. I'll just say, Phil, I went to those bathrooms at, at Winthrop last week, and it's a lot more than $250. And I think it's actually a lot more than $150,000 on Doian and Winthrop, so.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go to a vote on the main motion on Article nine. This requires a two-thirds vote because it's taking funds out of the stabilization fund. So we'll use the-- Is there a question? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Hello. I'm Michelle Joll of Hodge, Ten Birch Lane.
I'm sorry, Michelle?
Joll of Hodge, Ten Birch Lane, Ipswich. I just wanted to ask a question about the pain building repairs and restoration. You want $15,000. My question is, within the last five years, the parking lot was regraded and repaved. You had rotten, deteriorated fire escape, front porch, portions of picket fence removed and replaced, roof removed and replaced, all rotted and deteriorated siding removed and replaced, and entire building painted. Milded and wrinkled trip hazard carpet replaced, entire building after corb tripped. Both restrooms renovated, new fixtures installed, electrical service and lighting upgraded, storage room renovated to make a new office, second floor conference room renovated to make facilities director's office, all air conditioners repaired and replaced. And if the boiler needs replacement, labor and materials should not exceed $4,000. So $15,000 is a little bit more than what you need.
Okay. Chubb?
We're requesting $15,000 for this year's capital plan budget. Those are, those are past expenditures.
You're talking about a different year.
You're talking about you need a boiler moving forward? Is that correct?
$15,000 moving forward for, for the pain building. That's what we're asking, requesting tonight.
That's excessive.
Okay. So we'll go to a vote on this. This is the Annual Capital Plan. It requires a two-thirds vote. So we'll use the clickers. All right? All those in favor of passing the main motion on Article nine, which is to fund the capital plan as put forth. Yes, we are using the electronic voting devices. Okay. Have you got nine? There it is. Okay. All those in favor, please press one. All those opposed, please, please press two. And I'll give you some time. All right. Let's wind it up. You've got 10 more seconds to vote. Two, one. Voting is closed. And I declare the motion passes by a score of 290, is that 290? 196 to 41? Am I reading that right? Yeah, there. 196 to 41. That's a two-thirds vote. Okay. Article 10. Mr. Engel. Water main replacement.
Jim Engel, 362 Langbrook Road. I am the select board's appointment to the water subcommittee. And I move that the town appropriate the sum of $5,500,000 to survey, design, permit, and construct improvements of the town's water distribution system, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. And two, to raise this appropriation, that the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, be authorized to borrow said amount under the provisions of Mass. General Law's Chapter 44, Section 8, parentheses, 5, or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes to the town therefore. All or any portion of this borrowing may be accomplished through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premiums apply to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a light amount.
And is there a second, please? Mr. Kraft? I haven't heard from you all night.
If I could have--
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Engel.
And the next slide. This is a map showing the, the extent of the project. The project is to replace a 6,000, approximately 6,000-foot section of a 12-inch water main that was installed prior to 1900. So the water main is about 125 years old. And over the past few years, has shown its age through multiple breaks along High Street. To the left of the red mark is the Dowbrook, Ballbrook Complex, the water filtration plant, that produces the water which flows through this 12-inch main to the terminus of the proposed replacement area, which is basically the bridge, the railroad bridge at, at the railroad crossing. Again, it's a 6,000-foot, 12-inch main, 125 years old that will be replaced. It includes the main itself, all of the hydrants, all of the valves, and all of the services that are connected to the old main. What makes this project particularly difficult and expensive is the fact that it's done within a state highway. And so as a result, all of the paving that has to be done following laying of the main has to be done according to Mass. DOT specifications. There'll be police details essentially every step of the way, and a significant amount of construction oversight. Next slide, please. The funding for the program is a borrowing, $5.5 million. The term of the borrowing is 30 years at an interest rate of 4.1%. The first full year, principal and interest, which would occur in FY 21, which is not the coming fiscal year, but the following fiscal year, will be in the order of $410,000 round numbers. That number might change depending on the interest rates and other factors. But that's the estimated first year principal and interest cost. The impact on the water rates is significant. It'll, it'll impact our water rates by about 10%. So it's a major project, long overdue, replacing an ancient part of our system, and we would urge your support.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dougherty for the Finance Committee?
Mike Dougherty, 10 Appleton Park, Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee representative on the water subcommittee. Both the subcommittee and the Finance Committee are in unanimous support of this water main replacement. We believe that is the most fiscally responsible action of the town to take. It shows us being proactive instead of reactive to a pipe that, as Mr. Engel pointed out, is over 100 years old. So instead of having breaks randomly and interrupting the town and flow of traffic, we are going to be proactive and replace it. I would like to point out, though, that the burden of the debt is on the rate pairs, which is reflected in the 15% increase. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone care to be heard on this? Mr. Gogan? You have three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Phil Gogan, Kingfisher Road. I'm against this. Folks, just read the very bottom line. It says, "The debt service for this bond..." It says, "The debt service for this bond authorization will be paid by the water ratepayers and..." "and will have no impact on the tax rate." Who's paying for it? The other taxpayers, are you paying on the taxes? Are you paying on the water bill? You're paying for it. Now, you're talking five-million-dollar bond. The interest is going to be four percent, which is a very good rate right now. But I'd like to go back to the presentation in general. If we're going to use this as a guide, it doesn't say anything that Mr. Engel just pointed out, which would answer a lot of questions, but it also generates questions like, wasn't it five or seven years ago they put a sewer line in? If they put the sewer line in, why weren't they thinking about the water at the same time? Now, you're going to dig up the road again? I believe it was seventy, eight years ago they put the sewer line in. Here we are, going to dig it up again, and it's about a mile and a half, or I don't know how many miles, but you're talking more than what Jeffrey's neck road cost, and it was a mile and a half. That was one-point-four million is what it was bonded... What it cost. What it got bonded for was one-point-nine. Where's the other five-hundred thousand? Folks, there's too many empty spots in this book giving out... I didn't mind, it was late two days, I was waiting for it, but these figures are... Mr. Engel made an excellent presentation, and probably if I was sitting in the room listening to him, I'd go for it. I know he's a brilliant man. But this can be put off until we get a better explanation than what we have right here with, what, maybe five... Three lines, and then the vote. I'm watching this, the secondhand, Mr. Moderator, and I'm very upset with the presentation being, this being used as the gospel of what you're making decisions on, and the numbers are off. There's not enough information here to make a decision on five-and-a-half million dollars? No, no, no. You're paying taxes.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes. Sir, Mr. Johnson.
Mike Johnson, One New Mill Place. I have two questions. One, could I just clarify what the rate increase will be? I heard Mr. Engel say ten percent, and Mr. Dougherty say fifteen.
Jim, Jim will have the answer to that off the top of his head.
There were two numbers that were given. One was a ten percent number, and then Mr. Dougherty talked of a fifteen percent number. The ten percent number that I used is the rate impact of this proposal only. So if this proposal passes, the rate impact will be ten percent. And that ten percent occurs in fiscal twenty-one. The fifteen percent that Mr. Dougherty referenced is the rate increase for fiscal twenty, which is the year that starts July one, followed by fiscal twenty-one, which is the ten percent for the project plus an additional five percent. So we're looking at two years in a row with fifteen percent rate increases. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Thank you.
My second question, Mr. Engel may answer.
Jim, don't go too far.
Is...
Or maybe Vicki.
Will the replacement of the water main require any changes to the road surface at all?
Sure.
And maybe a second part of that question is, if it does, or whether it does or not, is there an opportunity to provide a bike lane along that road for the high school and middle school and other people?
Is that in the bidding? Please, please, no debates. No applauding for any debate.
Two-part question. Will there be any disturbance of the pavement? Yes, there will be disturbance of the pavement, and the project costs anticipate disturbance of the pavement. In terms of providing a bike lane, that has frankly not been discussed, but it's now on my list.
Okay, sir, you have a question?
Yes, Scott Glosserman, thirty-four Hartbeck Road. Question for Mr. Engel. How many miles of a hundred-and-twenty-five-year-old pipe are there, and will this be a recurring issue for years and years and years to come? And if so, was a more holistic approach, a fund, for instance, raising a fund for future improvements considered? Perhaps you can tell us what was debated.
So how many... Can you give us something about the number of feet in town that we're going to have to replace?
Well, the total water distribution system, and Vicki will correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's around ninety miles. It's approximately ninety miles of water distribution mains in town. The average age of those is probably fifty years. The life expectancy of a water main is fifty years. So you can see that our water mains alone are essentially at the end of their service life, although the service life, as you can see by this hundred-year-old main, oftentimes is... We can keep them running a lot longer than their estimated life. We are in the process of developing a long-term plan. I'll tell you a process. We just went through, if I can just have the time for a second here. We... The Water Subcommittee, under the direction of the Board of Selectmen as Water Commissioners, has looked at the problem of the entire water system. We did the same on wastewater Subcommittee for the sewer system. If we took the value of the water infrastructure that was determined a number of years ago using a fairly modest escalation, bringing it up to date, we believe that our water infrastructure has a value in today's dollars of about ninety million dollars. Now, you throw that against the fact that it's essentially all outdated, and you see the problem. And so that as we look to the future, we will be... We are looking at the establishment of, we call it a CARE fund, which is a capital asset replacement fund, that we're going to implement so that we begin to put money aside for the replacement of capital assets. We do not have a prioritized list at this point, but that's coming too. I hope that answers the question.
Okay. So we're going to go to a vote. You have a question, sir?
Another question.
If you have something, why don't you come down to the microphone, sir? Yes, your question, please.
Mitchell O., thirty-three Summers Street. The five-and-a-half-million-dollar sum, where did that come from?
The five...
That's a good number, which has come from design estimates that have been put together. I mean, the project is well-defined.
By a professional estimator? Okay. And second question is, how much of the town is served by this water pipe?
This pipe connects our water treatment plant to the town hill tank. It's a... And the town hill tank is essentially the core element in our system. So I would say that the entire town basically depends on the town hill tank being in service to function properly. So it serves... Essentially services the whole town, and a follow-up question might be, virtually a hundred percent of the town, within a few percent, is served by the municipal water system.
Thank you. I had a similar question. Is the... What is there doing? A survey done on these sort of water lines, or is it just that it's reached the end of its shelf life? Has somebody, you know, said that the water quality could decrease, or there's a large chance of failure? Like, why this one-hundred-and-twenty-five-year-old pipe as opposed to the other ones that you were mentioning?
Couple of reasons. Number one... A few reasons. Number one, it's one of the oldest pipes in the system. Second, it's the... It's the water main which is most critical to delivering water from the water treatment plant and Brown's well to town hill tanks, so it's a critical part of the distribution system. And third is, it breaks a lot.
Sir, did you want to add to the debate?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I do an amn...
No, just you stand at the microphone, please. Just give us your debate.
My name is John Page, ninety High Street. Can I do an amendment to the article?
Write it out. Write the motion and hand it to me.
Okay.
What do you want to do?
I just wanted to amend the article to suggest...
You don't amend articles. We had motions. The motion reads to appropriate five-point-five million dollars and do two-and-a-half override. What is your motion? You want to change the amount of the motion, the appropriation?
No. My motion is to recommend that the town consider the resurfacing of that section of High Street to reduce the speed of the traffic and increase the safety to the pedestrians and the historic homes that are close to that neighborhood. I'm only asking the town to consider the resurfacing of that road when they spend five...
Mr. Moderator. Okay. That is beyond the scope of the article. The article is to appropriate money and to raise and appropriate, et cetera. To make recommendations is not in the article. However, you're welcome to go to any of the meetings that all these people have and make those recommendations. And I encourage you to do so, because you seem very conscientious.
When...
Okay, we've got to move on here, okay? Yes, you all set?
Just to address that real quick, the reason why we haven't done bike lanes or any of that is because that would involve a complete restructuring of the road, or this... Which would cost a lot more. This bond is just to address the water main issues. Thank you.
So we have unanimous support from all three boards, and this requires a two-thirds vote. And we'll use the clickers. All right? So you want to get a voting slide up, Mark? And let me know when you're ready. Okay, all those in favor of the main motion under Article Ten, please press one. And those opposed, please press two.
I'd like to electorally board later.
No, no. Have a seat, sir. Okay, voting's in process. Mark, we're going to start winding it up. We have ten seconds to enter your vote, one or two. One for yes, two for no. Okay, I declare the motion carries by two-thirds vote, two-ten to twenty-nine. Thank you. Article eleven. Mr. Engel. Change of procedures for voting at town meeting. And I can tell you that I put this on the warrant as the moderator, but I'm not encouraging it, I'm not arguing it, I'm not endorsing it, I'm moderating it. Mr. Engel is going to make the motion, and he's been kind enough to offer to do that. So I'll recognize you, Mr. Engel, Article eleven.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Engel, three-sixty-two Linebrook Road. I move to amend the Ipswich general bylaws as set forth in Article eleven of the warrant of the town meeting.
Okay, this is our second. Mr. Kraft.
And if I could have the next slide, please. This is a request to include in our bylaws a change in the town meeting voting procedure, just as a preamble. The town moderator has wide discretion in terms of how votes are tallied. Voice votes, showing of the cards, raising of hands, and in a recent town meeting, we actually cast ballots. Again, it's the moderator's call on this. But in order to sort of do a belt and suspenders on this issue, the moderator has asked me to present this motion to essentially incorporate in our bylaws what effectively is sort of a warning to the community that we may use an electronic voting system with handheld wireless devices distributed to each registered voter. These things. So we would urge your support.
Okay. Finance Committee?
Mike Dougherty, Ten Appleton Park, Ipswich Finance Committee. The Finance Committee was in support of Article eleven, change to procedures for voting at town meeting, five to three. In opposition, there were two major concerns that came up at our warrant hearing. The first one was that the free trial would lead to an unvetted annual obligation, and the second concern was that it would undermine the spirit of town meeting. But as mentioned earlier, the Finance Committee is in support, five to three. Thank you.
Okay. And the Select Board is unanimous in support. Anyone care to be heard? Yes, Mr. Schaff.
Thank you. Michael Schaff, One Chagmark Woods Finance Committee. I rise to oppose this article. I think it's premature. We're experiencing the use of this facility this evening. I think it's a useful exercise, and I would expect that the Select Board and the School Committee and FINCOM and others will subsequently discuss, was this worth our while? Did it facilitate the meeting? By my count, I understand it costs something like forty thousand dollars to rent these. Am I correct? Is that... Anyway, we've used it several times, which is going to cost us, I don't know, what, five thousand dollars each? But for each vote?
Mr. Moreno, answer your questions.
But in any event, it's premature. I think that we ought not to change the bylaws until we decide this is something we want to do.
Thank you. Mr. Moreno.
Mr. Moderator, Anthony Moreno, Town Manager. Actually, the cost to purchase them is twenty-one thousand, and if we were to rent them at each town meeting, that costs us approximately twenty-five-hundred dollars. We have estimates from the company here tonight to do just that.
Okay, anyone else care to be heard?
Alex Howe, twenty-one, North Main Street.
Alex.
Howe, H-O-W-E.
Howe.
Yes. It's clear to me that we have just used these devices to approve funds that are two-thirds majority in votes. I understand the ease, and I don't necessarily want to oppose it specifically, but before we vote on using them, we have already used them. I'd just like to point that out, and I thank you.
Thank you. Sir, Mr. Boyne?
Al Boynton, forty-one, High Street. I would just like to voice my support for this. I think it's time the Ipswich moves forward with Into the Modern World. In fact, probably even just saying that we might use electronic devices or handheld might be a little weak even when you look at where we are in the world. So I would support us doing this. I think it adds a lot of ease. I think it speeds up the vote significantly, and by saying we can use it doesn't mean we're buying them. It means that we have the opportunity to do it.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go to a vote. Again, the Select Board is unanimous in favor. The Finance Committee is five in favor, three opposed, and School Committee is two in favor and five opposed. This requires a simple majority. Let's go to the clickers, right? All right. All those in favor... All right, I'll give you a second. Mark's fast, not that fast. Tell me when you're ready. Okay. All those in favor, please press one. All those opposed, please, please press two. Okay, want to give them ten seconds, Mark? Okay, voting is done. I declare the motion carries, one-fifty-seven to seventy-six. Okay. Article eleven. Okay, before we get to that, it's nine o'clock, and we're about halfway through, so what I'm going to do is limit the debate to two minutes each. Okay? So everyone knows, going forward, the debate is now two minutes each. So Article twelve, the stabilization fund. Mr. Whitmore?
William Whitmore, three Kinsman Court. I move to transfer the sum of fifty thousand dollars from free cash to the stabilization fund.
Seconded by Ms. Alkson. Okay. Is that it? You want to tell us about it? I'm able... It's your motion.
This is basically just a rainy day fund.
Move fifty thousand dollars into the...
Free cash stabilization fund. Yep, rainy day account.
Okay, all right. Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee is unanimous support, and just to make note that this is a pretty significant thing, because what happened...
is a pretty significant thing because what happens is, is bond rating agencies and what have you take a look at a town, and when they see a continuous pattern of adding to a stabilization fund, it shows stronger security. Sometimes we're able to add more, sometimes less. But this year, considering our free cash, we are looking at a $50,000 contribution, which is about the average of what we do normally speaking. So the Finance Committee is unanimous in support of this. Thank you.
Okay, and just so people know, maybe probably most of you that are here at nine o'clock like this probably do, but you put money into the stabilization fund, it only requires a simple majority vote, but to take it out requires a two-thirds vote. So it's really a piggy bank that's like saving, so. But it's up to you. It used to be, until a couple of years ago, they changed state law, it used to be two-thirds vote to put it in or take it out. Now it's just to take it out. Okay, so we'll go to a vote. All three boards are unanimously in support. This requires a simple majority. Let's use the cards, okay? All those in favor? And those opposed? Okay, I declare it passes by a two-thirds vote. Mr. Kraft, Article 13. OPEB.
Okay, Article 13, Other Post-Employment Benefits Funding. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $71,910 and to transfer the sum of $110,807 from free cash and to transfer the combined sum of $182,717 to the OPEB Trust Fund.
And a second? Seconded by Mr. Mutafi.
Okay, in 2010, we established the OPEB Trust. It is set aside to pay health insurance benefits for our retirees. We have currently a considerable liability in that area, almost 22, 23 million dollars. But each year, we've been putting money aside to pay that unfunded liability. And as a result, among other things, our market rating has gone up. And we are considered to be a prudent community. So it is a good thing to do. It is a small amount of money relative to an unfunded liability of 22 million. But the prudence that we have demonstrated over the years with this trust fund, in which we religiously, each annual town meeting, put money aside, we are considered to be prudent and worthy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kraft. Okay, Mr. Schaaf from the Finance Committee?
Michael Schaaf, Finance Committee. The Finance Committee supported this unanimously, eight to zero. You've probably over the years heard various FinCom members stand up, usually Jamie Fay, who is regrettably home with recovering from back surgery tonight, supporting this. Indeed, it does reflect a prudent investment by the town. And the FinCom commends the Select Board in establishing a policy several years ago on regular commitments to OPEB that has resulted in a reduction in our liability as judged by the actuaries. They did that, I don't know, but they did. And we're doing a good job. We recommend approval of this.
Okay. Anyone care to be heard? So we'll go to a vote. This is a simple majority and we'll use the cards. You can see all three boards are unanimous in support. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed, I declare the motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Article 14, Chief Nikas, Nuisance and Dangerous Dog Amendment.
Paul Nikas, Chief of Police. I move to amend the Ipswich General Bylaws as set forth in Article 14 of the warrant for this town meeting.
Okay, a second? By Ms. Alexson, chief?
Basically, right now, our town bylaws when it comes to nuisance and dangerous dogs has no specific language about a continuously barking dog that can become a nuisance. So taking our lead from other departments around the area, we decided to add specific language that just allows the animal control officer or a police officer to check on a continuously barking dog that has become a nuisance to a neighborhood or neighbor specifically. It just gives us a little more authority to look into the incident, make sure that the dog is not in any sort of duress, as well as allowing people to have the chance to express their concerns about it. It doesn't change the right to someone going forward with a nuisance dog hearing or a dangerous dog hearing, which is your next article. So I strongly recommend support of this article.
Okay, Mr. Schaaf.
The Select, the Select Board, where am I now? The FinCom supports this-
Are you on the ballot too?
Yeah, yeah, no, I think so.
Wrong.
Eight to zero. Perhaps the Chairwoman of the FinCom selected me to make this presentation because I love dogs. But I nonetheless think that this makes a lot of sense.
Okay, anyone care to be heard? All right, let's go to a vote. This is a simple majority and go to the cards. All those in favor? All those opposed? I declare the motion passes unanimously. Article 15. Ms. Hogan?
Robin Hogan, 80 Essex Road. I need to read my, sorry. New at this.
That's okay. Take your time.
I move to amend the Ipswich General Bylaws as set forth in Article 15 of the warrant for this town meeting.
Second? Anyone second it? Seconded by Mr. Doherty. You may proceed.
Thank you. Robin Hogan, 80 Essex Road. Article 15 requests a change in the hearing authority for nuisance and dangerous dogs. Currently, when a formal complaint is made regarding a nuisance or dangerous dog, that complaint must be submitted in writing to the town manager. An investigation of the complaint is then initiated and it culminates in a hearing. Our current bylaw names the Select Board as the hearing authority for the disposition of the complaint. We are asking voters to approve a change in hearing authority from the Select Board to the Chief of Police, the interim Chief of Police, or his or her designee. The basis for this article is the belief that because nuisance and dangerous dogs are a public safety issue, the town official charged with keeping the public safe should also be the hearing authority in these cases. Want to make it clear that Article 15 does not change the appeal process pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157, that allows a dog owner to appeal the hearing authority's decision and have the case heard in District Court. The article only changes the hearing authority, not the appeal process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, Mr. Schaaf, Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee also supports this, eight to zero, and this dog lover supports it too.
Okay. And the Select Board is one in favor, four opposed. Ms. Alexson, did you want to speak to this?
Lynda Alexson, I just want to say I did vote against this. And the only reason that I did so was I was concerned about the conflict that could or could not happen with the police chief hearing the complaint that was brought by his subordinate. So I am not opposed to having another town official maybe hear these complaints instead of the Select Board, but I just had that question about conflict.
Thank you. Anyone else care to be heard? All right, so we'll go to a vote. This requires a simple majority. And we'll use the cards, all those in- Oh, I didn't hear that. Did you, Bill? I apologize.
I just want to reiterate what Ms. Alexson said. I think to have an officer providing information to the chief for a hearing is probably not the best way to handle this. I'm not opposed to moving it from the Board of Selectmen, but I don't think this is a good idea. I think there are better ways to handle it. And I think if it were to come back again at another town meeting, it, the concerns that many of us on the board have could be ironed out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so let's go to a vote on the main motion. We'll use the cards. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? You know, the chair is in doubt, so we'll go to the clickers. All right? Get a slide up for 15. 15. Okay, so all those in favor of the main motion or Article 5, press one. All those opposed, press two. And the voting is open. And we're up to 200, so let's, Mark, you wanted to turn the timer on. 10 seconds left to vote, folks? Whoa. Whoa. Wow. Okay. I declare the motion fails. Article 16. It's, we're on to the next article. Article 16, Open Space Committee Appointment. Mr. Gibb moves that the meeting take no action under this article. And can Keith or someone just tell us in two minutes why we're not doing anything under this? It's on the warrant. Real briefly.
I actually cannot. I have been not involved-
You know what, the town manager's got those. Sorry.
This article came forward originally as a suggestion to change the terms. There were a few things added to it. When they were added, it pointed out that there were a few flaws in even the original article. So we'd asked the drafters from the Planning Office to come back in the fall town meeting with the finely defined articles. So we're asking to take no action at this time and it'll come back in the fall. Thank you.
Okay. So this is a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? Okay, I declare the motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 17 is Mr. Celine, Updating the Town Charter.
Craig Celine, Government Study Committee Chair. I move to authorize the Select Board to petition the Massachusetts General Court to amend Section 2 of the Ipswich Charter as set forth in Article 17 of the warrant for this town meeting. And to authorize the General Court to make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill, except that the Select Board may approve amendments which shall be within the scope of general public objectives of the petition.
And a second? Is there a second? Second, okay. Mr. Celine?
Three sentences are on page 46 and 47 in the bold print. And that's what I'll be talking to. So if you want to take a look at that to follow along. As the Government Study Committee has worked on this over the last 18 months, four key words or themes came forward as we took a look at how Ipswich governs itself and what the relationship is between the town manager and the Select Board. The four words are, themes are unprecedented, collaboration, process, and boundaries. So if you keep those four themes in mind as I walk you through my very short presentation. Next slide, please, next one. What problem are we trying to solve? When we take a look at our future and the needs that we have for infrastructure over the next 10, 15, 20, 25, 30 years, it's over $200 million, over $200 million. We've got a sample of that tonight in Article 10 when we've got a $5.5 million bond issue. FinCom has described what faces us as unprecedented demand, unprecedented demand for infrastructure spending. When we take a look at how we've resolved and worked on big ticket item issues over the last 10 years or so, our process could be described as ad hoc. And we've had conflicts, but we've also missed opportunities to leverage and understand ahead of time what issues that we're dealing with. Next slide, please. So the Government Study Committee has worked over the last 18 months on two key leadership positions in the charter, the two key leadership positions in the charter. The Select Board and the Town Manager. This project was assigned to us by the Select Board that specifically asked us to take a look at, in the charter, the relationship between the Select Board and the Town Manager. Focus on that relationship. Just a little background information, those two positions have appointing authority for 40 to 50 of our boards and committees. Forty to 50 of our boards and committees. We've got about 80 overall. When we take a look at that appointing authority, the Town Manager is in, excuse me, is involved in appointing a number of positions and that's in the charter. So too is the Select Board involved in charter appointments through committees. Over those 18 months, we've had eight interviews with town officials, town managers, interim town managers, and a town administrator from Burlington. We've had 15 meetings with various town boards as a part of the buildup to two warrants, the fall meeting last year and the, this meeting here. So that includes the School Committee, the Finance Committee, the Select Board, the Planning Board, as well as the Tribe Board. What we've learned through those meetings and interviews, and then finally taking a look at what happens across the state, the theme best practices and process comes forward. We took a look at other towns. We took a look at Harvard. We took a look at Plymouth. Town Council has identified, Wenham has similar language in their charters with expectations, broad expectations, that the Select Board will be responsible for either strategic planning, long-range planning, or the process of strategic planning. We've had 21 committee meetings of the Government Study Committee that were open. We've talked to universities that were involved in strategic planning and helping towns do their strategic planning. We've communicated with the Department of Revenue and various associations of finance directors for towns, Select Board, and also talked to a past president, interviewed past president of the Massachusetts Municipal Association. We came away with several themes. One was collaboration. That was a key word that existed in a number of the charters for what Select Boards were supposed to do. So what we learned was a Select Board was responsible for long-range planning and process and all of the policies and regulations that would come onto that. Next slide, please. Not going to go through all of these. This is my back-of-the-envelope tabulation of what faces us as a community over the next 15, 20, 30 years. So here are some of the specific targets of infrastructure improvements that amount at a minimum, conservatively, to 200 million. That first line, public utility upgrade, that 100 million, we've just approved 5.5 million of that for the water main replacement. That's a big deal. If we've got 90 miles of water mains in the town and it costs $500,000 to a million dollars on average to replace those that are at least 50 years old, some 125, do the math. This is the unprecedented part in what drove the Government Study Committee to take a look at, when we consider the future, how well are we positioned to deal with sorting through these issues and these needs from all over our community? There are three that have a plan, the OPEB, the pension liability, and the annual capital. There is a routine and a process and a policy to address those. Doesn't change the total numbers, but that does indicate that we're just beginning to have a plan. Next slide, please. With these long-term needs, the Select Board's broad responsibilities need to be articulated in the charter. Why in the charter versus the bylaws? When you take a look at the bylaws, they detail the duties of all of our major committees. The bylaws cover the major duties, including FinCom, the Board of Health, et cetera. Those duties do not appear broadly or specifically in the charter. In the charter, the Select Board, Section 2, as you'll read on page 46, only deals with election and term of office. Nothing about the broader responsibilities. But a lot of time on the page and a half was spent on the Town Manager. This is because back in 1967, we got this new charter because we changed our form of government to Town Manager and Select, Select Board. So the charter is- So, the charter as it exists today was written in 1967, focused on being clear on what the role of the Town Manager was, and guess what? The Select Board appoints and manages the Town Manager. The charter goes on in Section Two, Three, Four, to talk about appointing authorities and investigative responsibilities, but nowhere are the broad charter definition of what the Select Board is supposed to do or found. You'll start to see, when you take a look at the three sentences that we talked about, the word "collaboration" comes to the fore. Collaboration, you'll see words like "Select Board will work with," "FinCom," and "Town Manager." It's assumed that they'll do the budget, and based on feedback that we received in the first round of our meetings with FinCom, they balked at the use of the word "balanced," and they felt that it was confusing in terms of what the role in presenting the annual budget was at the annual meeting. So, we've moved to a collaboration, to say, "We expect the citizens, the voters of the town of Ipswich, expect the Select Board, the Town Manager, and FinCom to develop the policies to help us deal with these unprecedented needs that we've got." But also, when we take a look at, it's more than just a budget issue. When we move to long-range planning, we heard tonight that the Water Department is working on a long-range plan for piping, but look at all the expenses that we have. Where's the long-term planning process that pulls all of the departments together? We've got... Heard some concerns that the school committee, the way this language is written, does this mean the school committee will be beholden to the Select Board? We very carefully talked about and put in writing, "The Select Board leads the process." They is the process leader. Doesn't say approve, doesn't say review, but you use the word "collaboration," and you use the word "process" when you say, "As a town, we need to figure out what our policies are on rate increases, short- and long-term debt, stabilization, where we go regionally for funding sources and partners, a whole host of things," when we put that lens on the future of Ipswich.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll hear from the Finance Committee's recommendation on Article Seventeen, the main motion under Article Seventeen.
Walter Harper, Three Mahone Drive. Thank you, everybody, for the... Other than the ten people that didn't vote for me. No, thanks, Dan. When we heard first about this article at our warrant hearing, there were some things that... Some questions that we...
They've already left.
Yes.
They already left.
Yeah. Hopefully, we still have a forum. And as we mentioned in the report, we, the Finance Committee, definitely support long-range planning and think it's critical as we face at the juncture that we're at in the town of Ipswich. When we... When those questions that we had when we initially had the hearing and when we made our vote was, "Does the language belong in the bylaws or the charter?" And we heard further... We got further information from Town Council on that. We asked if the language covered the full scope of responsibilities of the board, and then, "Does the language encroach on the autonomy of the school committee in making their plans that are not specifically capital?" So, again, we had broad support of the concept, and it's just more a matter of how the execution of that concept occurs. And subsequently saw the school committee voting unanimously for this article. I think that would have probably swayed some of our votes as well. So, we agree that the inclusion of this language emphasizes the priority we'd like on long-term planning. We think that the Town Council's motion...
The school committee is six to one.
Six, one, sorry.
Yeah.
Close. Six, one.
Close.
Close. So, basically, their support was important to us because, again, it is the collaborative nature of our... The work that we do together that will bring us forward. So, the only... The one thing that in this... In the warrant that we said was that maybe this belongs more in an overall view, a holistic view of the process, of all of the committees, and that was within the Town Council's opinion. But as Gary and Craig have said, different towns do it different ways. So, really, the town legislature, which you are, it's your chance to opine on this. So, we voted five to two against at our warrant hearing. This was five to eight.
Okay. Does the Select Board want to be heard on this? Select Board was three in favor, two opposed. Ms. Alexon.
Linda Alexon. I wholeheartedly agree with the intent of this article, and I appreciate the hard work of the Government Study Committee on this, but I voted against it because of how it was written and because I questioned whether it really belongs in the charter or the bylaws. I appreciate the objectives of identifying Select Board duties and responsibilities and having them easily accessible and understood, but this appeared to me to be more of a detailed instruction manual directing action by not only the Select Board but other committees and boards and town employees. I think the language of the proposed amendment could confuse readers if they compare it to Section Twenty-eight of the charter, which says that "The selectmen shall consider the tentative budget submitted by the Town Manager, make recommendations relative to it, and send a copy of the budget and the recommendations to the Finance Committee. Charter amendments have the force and effect of state law and must be approved by state legislature. I'm not sure that a list of Select Board duties and responsibilities belong in a document that requires that level of approval. This list should be easily amendable in the future if and when we wish to add or change the language, which we no doubt will. I believe the Select Board duties and responsibilities are better placed in the bylaws where even small but important improvements can be easily made without the necessity of asking the state legislature for approval." Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Anderson from the Planning Board, and then we'll go to debate.
Keith Anderson, Fourteen Manning Street, Chair of the Planning Board. The Planning Board believes that the various boards certainly have leadership roles to play, depending on their particular area of government, their function, their expertise. Importantly, Ipswich is at a point where, as we've seen, there are many intertwined and competing priorities in our not-too-distant future. It is our view that the Select Board, as the elected executive body of our town meeting form of government, has a critical leadership role to play, and particularly, number one, in setting priorities, and number two, in coordinating the process of long-term planning. As currently written, the town charter has only general language, as Mr. Saleen stated, for the Select Board's job description. The Government Study Committee has completed very thorough, in our opinion, and in many ways thankless work, to create, in our view, some needed and carefully worded structure pertaining to the Select Board's function, and importantly states that Town Board should work in a more coordinated way. The Planning Board unanimously recommends that you change the charter that is proposed as Article Seventeen. Thank you.
Okay. So, now we'll go to debate, and as I reminded you, pointed out earlier, we're going to go to debate now. Two minutes per person because it's late. So, anyone want to... Mr. Wasserman, I know you have a motion to amend this. I'm not going to get to that yet. We'll take that up after the debate. Let's flesh this out a little bit, see how people feel about this. Does anyone want to speak in favor of this? Actually, we just heard the presentation in favor. Is there any opposition right now? Janice?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Two minutes.
I feel the need to clarify because I'm sure it seems a bit odd to town meeting that the Finance Committee came out in opposition to this. I want to be perfectly clear. We are not opposed to codifying and formalizing a budget process and a collaborative process within that budget. We had three separate opportunities to vet this article with the Government Study Committee, who has done fantastic work on a very complex, very complex topic. Our opposition to this is merely in really the form that it's taking. We had two points where we had concerns. The first, as Ms. Alexon pointed out, was around whether this belonged in the charter and the bylaws. At our second conversation with the Government Study Committee, we requested an opinion from Town Council on where this should reside. Town Council gave us a thoughtful and thorough opinion that essentially said, "Either was fine, and it was at the discretion of the town, but that, looking at past practices of the town, we may want to look at a more holistic approach." It was on that advice that we ended up voting in opposition, not to codifying the roles, but to doing it piecemeal, and instead encouraged the Government Study Committee to look at detailing the roles for the Select Board and the Finance Committee and the School Committee and the Planning Board. So, again, our opposition isn't to codifying and holding all of us accountable to the process. Our opposition was doing it piece by piece.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone in favor of this? Sir? Name and address, please.
Yes. Good evening. I'm Jay Stanbury of Four Fellows Road. This Article Seventeen is intended to bring clarity to the role and responsibilities of the Select Board. If it's approved, this article will allow the Select Board to work more effectively with the other boards and commissions as we move into the future and begin to address some of the issues that you've seen we'll be facing in our community. As all of you know, there are a number of critical issues, which we've seen, that the town faces, and these include our school buildings, our public safety facilities, and our infrastructure. To address these issues, we will require a level of interdepartmental coordination that at times has been difficult to achieve in the past, in part because of the fragmented jurisdiction within Town Hall. This article will centralize responsibility, improve municipal accountability, and allow the Select Board to assume the leadership that we need to respond to these current and future challenges. So, I urge all of you to vote in favor of this Article Seventeen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any opposition?
I have a question.
Well, hold on a second. Some of the debate may answer your question. You're in favor of this, sir, correct? Is there anyone opposed to it? Other than your amendment, do... Well, let's take up your amendment now.
I think that would be appropriate, sir.
Okay. All right. Hold on a second. If you want to say something, come on down to the microphone. Okay. Next... Would you go to the amendment slide, Mr. Wasserman's amendment? Okay. So, Mr. Wasserman moves. You can see it there. Why don't you read it for us, officially? Make your motion.
I, William Wasserman of One Ninety-three Argillo Road, move to amend the main motion under Article Seventeen by changing the word "the" to "a" in the second proposed new sentence in Section Two, so that the amended sentence reads as follows: "The Select Board shall take a leadership role in a collaborative process among the public bodies." My argument is simple.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Second from Dr. O'Flin. Okay. Two minutes, sir.
I think that's long enough.
You can do it in one.
I... Thank you. I don't disagree with the premise of most of what the Government Study Committee has done. I just don't like to assign such a powerful word as "the" leadership and... To the Board of Selectmen. I think that the other boards have very important roles that don't have to be specified but should be respected. The Board of Selectmen has all the tools that it needs under "a" leadership definition. And I think, if I can trespass just a little, that in the past, perhaps, the Board of Selectmen has gone too far. I don't mean in any sense to reduce the role of the selectmen and the town manager in making long-term plans, but that's not necessary by changing the word from "the" to "a." Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay. So, we're just going to have debate now on Mr. Wasserman's motion only. Okay? So, he's moved to amend the main motion by changing "the" to "a." Anyone want to speak to that? Let's go to a vote.
Mr. Moderator.
Oh, you want to...
I'm going to oppose.
Okay. All right.
In our form of government, the Select Board is the chief executive body with ultimate responsibility for the financial well-being of our town and the municipal services that are provided to us. The Wenham Town Charter, that is another customer of our Town Council, has, "The Board of Selectmen shall serve as the goal-setting, long-range planning, and policymaking body of the town." That was under the advice of Town Council. That was accepted by the state legislature, so we're promoting the same thing. But I'll put it to you... I think that the "a" versus "the" is not really productive, but we're here to serve. And if you all think that "a" versus "the" is more comfortable for you, the Government Studies Committee will back you, will back that, and we'll do everything we can to make it happen. More importantly, whatever the vote of this outcome is, I urge you to vote in favor of this article, this charter Section Two language, because good things will come to the town as a result of it, and then I'll speak to the main motion when it's...
Let's just speak... No, let's stick to the motion to amend. Do you have anything else to say about that?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anyone want to speak to the motion to amend? Okay, we'll go to a vote. This requires a major... A simple majority vote. And we'll use the cards. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Mr. Wasserman's motion to change "the" to "a." And those opposed. Oh, man. Let's go to the clickers. All those... Can you get a slide up? Yep, take... Give you a second. Give Mark a second. All those in favor of Mr. Wasserman's motion to amend the main motion by substituting "a" for "the." Okay. Not the main motion. Yeah, you got to make a... Can you just make a generic one? Yeah, there you go. Okay. All right. Voting is open. One for yes, two for no. All right. Ten seconds. Mark him in ten seconds. Three, two, one. Okay. I declare the motion passes. One twenty-one to ninety. Okay. So, the main motion is amended, all right? Now, we'll finish the debate on the main motion. I've recognized you once, Mr. Champion. I'm not going to recognize you until everyone's spoken. So, the main motion is as Mr. Saleen read it, but with the change that Mr. Wasserman accomplished. Okay? Sir? Name and address, please. It's Charlie Pierce. Want to speak into that microphone so we can hear you?
Charlie Pierce, Seven Linden Street.
Like a rock star.
Thanks. I just want to speak in support of this motion or this... The article. You know, long-term planning is obviously pretty vital. We heard a lot about what it could be in infrastructure for water and for a little bit about the schools, and your one slide on that $200 million-plus investments that are needed, you know, I'd love to see a lot more detail on that. And then, you know, be able to... I think when we vote on these things, we have a bigger picture. You know, I work in the Baker Polito administration, and one of the things I'm most impressed with their office is how they have a strategic operations staff that literally moves the ball forward every day in the multiple agencies to make sure that they're planning appropriately and that they're thinking long-term and that they're thinking across secretariats. You know, it seems to me like the Select Board is the, you know, the right executive-type authority to take that leadership here, and this would add a little bit of accountability to that process so that the next meetings we have coming up here, we can start seeing a little bit more of the whole picture.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Safran.
Johnny Safran, One Fourteen Essex Road. I am opposing this on the basis that I've been around a while. Participated in selectmen's meetings for many, many years, served on the Finance Committee for many, many years, and I pay attention. I think the selectmen are very well aware of what their role is and what we expect of them, and I think if we're going to get that detailed about what their roles are, it needs to be for all committees, not just the Board of Selectmen. I have faith in our community, that we elect the best, and that they do a great job and don't need a little handbook on what their job is. To be elected and to serve is a lot of work, and I don't think anyone's going to get on a board and not know that this is what they need to do. So, I have more faith in our Board of Selectmen than to have to direct them on how to do their job. their job. So I'm just basically saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Williams, do you have a question still? This debate's answered your question?
Ralph Williams, 9 Nagset Road. This article raises an issue that I've run into before, which, in my opinion, makes it impossible for us as a town to make a sensible judgment, because the article says we're going to change something, but we don't know what the change is. It's not written down anywhere. It wasn't presented anywhere. How can we possibly vote on it?
Okay. Anyone else care to be heard? I've recognized you once.
That was on the amendment.
That was on this article.
That was on the amendment to the article.
It was under this article.
I have not spoken on the article.
I tell you what I'll do. I'll give you two minutes, but I want to hear something new. All right?
This exercise has proven to us that very few people understand that these duties belong to the Select Board. We've gone to FinCom meetings where they've said they don't know if the Select Board wants to have these duties. They have them, and they've had them since 1967, but people don't understand that it exists. So how can the current or future Select Board members fulfill these duties if they don't know that they exist? And a comment from Chair Lady Janet's Clement Skelton during the discussions with the FinCom is, "Everybody wins when roles and responsibilities are clear. You end up with a better work product. In this case, you end up with better government." This Town Charter Amendment assures the School Committee a permanent seat and voice at the long-term planning and priorities tables as representatives of our young people who are the future of our town and our country. This Town Charter Amendment has been agreed to by Town Council in our interpretation of its response that the Government Study Committee requested of him. There have been 12 Charter Amendments made over the past years. They happen when we need them and issues develop, and this is a priority, in our view, for you all to support so that we can make sure our town moves forward with these challenges that we face. It doesn't tell... give the Select Board any more duty other than to coordinate the processes so that we're all together on this, we can watch what takes place, and then Town Meeting has better recommendations to vote on over the years on these challenges that we face. That's what this is supposed to do, because it's all coming back to you, and it's clearly written in the Charter. There's nothing that we're adding to the Charter. There's nothing vague about this. There's nothing confusing about it. It just identifies responsibility for budget policies, responsibility for processing long-term plans, and responsibilities for policies and regulations. A lot has gone behind this. It's very well thought out. I urge you to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll go to a vote on the amended main motion with the change that Mr. Wasserman brought forward. And let me just say one thing that Mr. Wasserman pointed out back under one of the earlier articles. He's pointed out that Ms. Skelton misspoke, this is Article 3 or 4, about the money in the municipal budget going to the school and said, "I was supposed to correct that." If I were policing the debate in here, we'd be here all night. Okay? The moderator is not supposed to police, to correct people. I've heard a number of misstatements on this one, on many of them, but it's not for me to correct people. It's for you to listen to them and decide for yourselves. So with that, let's go to the main... vote on the main motion, amended main motion on Article 17. It's a simple majority vote. And let's use the cards, all right? All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? I declare the motion carries by a majority vote. Okay. Article 18. Updating the Town Bylaws Gender Neutral.
I'm Scott Glossermin.
Yep.
Thank you. I'm Scott Glossermin, Government Study Committee. I move to amend the Town Bylaws as amended by substituting for the term "Board of Selectmen" and for the word "Selectmen," in each and every place either one appears the term "Select Board" or "Member of the Select Board," by substituting the term "Member of the Select Board" for the word "Selectmen" in each and every place where it appears. And by making all references to the Town Manager, the Town Clerk, and other Town Officers gender-neutral substantially is set forth in the document entitled "Gender-Neutral Redraft of Town Bylaws," appended as Addendum A to the warrant for this Town Meeting with additional revisions dated May 10, 2019, on file with the Town Clerk's office.
Is there a second? Ms. Jones, second. Okay. Sir?
Thanks. This is just a continuation of work that we started over a year ago. Already passed this in the Charter. Now we're just continuing this to be applied to the bylaws.
Okay. Ms. Skelton.
Janice Skelton, Town Finance Committee. The Finance Committee unanimously supports this article and the work of the Government Study in continuing to update our documents to gender-neutral language.
Okay. As you can see, all four boards are unanimous in support. Does anyone care to be heard? So we'll...
I'm aware this is a delicate subject, and I do...
I'm sorry. Your name and address, please.
Alexander Howe, 21 North Main Street.
Okay.
I'm aware this is a sensitive subject. A lot of people that I've talked to have certain opinions about it, and I'd like to voice some of those through my own personal opinion. And I propose an amendment that would say "Select Person" instead of "Member," because that even still has gender associations to it.
Okay. Let's see your motion. You got to... You're going to need to... You need to write it.
Okay.
Okay. While he's writing his motion, is there anyone else that wants to be heard on this? And if I could ask everyone that anticipates speaking on anything, please come down and, you know, get ready, be right by the microphone so we don't have to lose time. And if anyone has a motion to amend, there are forms that the tellers can get you. You can fill them out, as this gentleman is just doing now. Okay. We're going to go on to Article 19 while he works on that. We'll go back to 18. Ms. Young, report of the Government Study Committee.
Diane Young, 60 East Street. I move to allow the Government Study Committee to present their findings about the subject matter of Article 18 on the warrant of the 20... I think it was supposed to say 18, annual Town Meeting election of Planning Board Members.
It is. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schaaf. Okay. And... But is anyone opposed to this? Okay. I declare it passes unanimously. You can make your presentation.
Slide 11, great report. And would you, Mr. Moderator, please let me know with a 30-second mark if I can't... since I can't see the timer? May I have the slide for the Article 19 report? May I have the slide for the Article 19 report?
Mark the slides for 19.
And the next one? Thank you. A year ago, Town Meeting heard a citizen's petition to change our charter, to change the Planning Board from being appointed as it has been since 1963 to elected. That petition didn't pass, and a number of those who spoke to the issue at that time asked for a recommendation from the Government Study Committee on whether to appoint or elect. So as a member of that committee, I'm presenting that to you now. Next slide, please. In response, the committee researched this issue over the week... over the winter. We talked to town officials in 22 comparable towns in the state, learning about their practices, the advantages and disadvantages of election and appointment, their wisdom, and we tracked proposals in other towns that were similar to this one. We sought out the views of Ipswich people who were for and against the citizen's petition, and we reviewed relevant sections of the Mass General laws, also taking into consideration what the Planning Board does, which I will not go into. I can let you know if you need to know. Next slide, please. Based on the responsibilities of the Planning Board, the Government Study Committee came to these conclusions. The qualities that are desirable in a Planning Board are long tenures, because it takes time to learn the rules and regulations that they're working under and accountable to; skills that complement other members, for instance, you might want an architect, a lawyer, a planner, a builder, and engineer; previous exposure to the Planning Board so that the new member's not starting off cold; and excellent attendance to meet the legal requirements for votes. Next slide, please. What is not desirable in a Planning Board is single-issue candidates or applicants, for instance, someone that just wants to be on the board to effect a particular development proposal. Also, what's not desirable is the appearance of partiality, a lack of candidates or applicants, and extensions when a vote is being taken. Next slide, please. So which method, appointing or electing, serves the town better? This is a chart that shows in general which methods serve the need of a Planning Board. And please note that these criteria we're using here do not apply across the board to all the boards and committees of our town. So you see that longevity is supported by both appointment and election, as is diversity of skills. For candidates with no agenda, in general, its appointment process is better in getting that result. And for previous exposure to the Planning Board, also appointment. And we in Ipswich get that through our use of associates who go onto the Planning Board and move up after a couple of years. Excellent attendance is also, in general, better supported by an appointment process, as is the pool of candidates and applicants. Running for election can be a hurdle to people, and some towns have had no one appear on the ballot. Our research points strongly to appointment. Next slide, please. Therefore, the recommendation of the Government Study Committee is to keep the Planning Board appointed. No action is needed on this report, and if you're interested in the full report of our research, you will soon be able to find it on the Town website on the Government Study Committee page. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. You want... You're going to put the his amendment. So we'll go back to eight. We'll go back to 17. And Mr. Howe's amendment.
18.
Excuse me. 18. Thank you. 18. And they're going to type that up. So Mr. Howe's motion, you'll see it... There it is. Okay. He moves to amend the main motion on Article 18 by substituting the word "Selectmen," otherwise given in Article 18, to "Select Person," so recommended in Article 18. Okay? Is there a second? Is anyone seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded. Okay. Anyone care to be heard? So we'll go to a debate... Uh, excuse me. We'll go to a vote. And this requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the Howe amendment that you see up on the wall that I just read, please raise your cards. The motion is to... If anyone's unclear, I'll go through this again. Mr. Howe's motion is to amend the main motion under Article 18 by substituting the word "Selectmen," otherwise given in Article 18, to "Select Person," as recommended in Article 18. All right? So all those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? I declare the motion fails. Now, we'll go back to the main motion under Article 18, updating the bylaws. You can see all four boards are unanimous in support. Does anyone care to be heard? Okay. So we'll go to a vote on the main motion. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed? I declare the motion carries by two-thirds vote. We did 19, so now, Mr. Boynton, Article 20.
Al Boynton, 41 High Street.
Hold on a second. I'll let them get this slide up for you. Okay. Go ahead. That's a mouthful, so take your time.
Okay. This is Article 20, Reduction in Density Allowance for Mixed-Use IRR/RA Lots. I move to amend footnote 8 in the Dimensional and Density Regulations of the Protective Zoning Bylaw referred to in Article 20 of the warrant for this Town Meeting, so that the new footnote 8 reads as follows: If a lot is divided by the boundary line between two underlying zoning districts and an active use is proposed for that portion of the lot which is located in the less restrictive underlying zoning district, and the lot is not divided by the boundary line between the IR and RRA zoning district, the area of the lot within the more restricted district may be included in fulfilling Dimensional and Density Regulations for the proposed active use, provided that the actual use of that portion of the lot which is located in the more restrictive district is proposed to be passive in nature. Does anybody understand that?
There is another one.
Okay. So in summary, these changes will remove a loophole that now allows higher density in the limited areas that have lots split. Could you bring up the slide with a... There we go.
There you go.
And the lots... So these are... These are the lots I'm referring to here. They're split zoning lots between in-town residential and rural residential Zone A. There's 59 of them, and I'll go through this. So these changes will remove a loophole that now allows higher density in the limited areas that have lots split between in-town residential and rural residential A zoning. The lots that will see the primary impact of this change are on the High Street... or in High Street in the Architectural Preservation District that historically had barns and agricultural land in the back going up the slope of Town Hill. The goal is to help protect the historic rural portions bordering IR zoning that can currently be used to increase the density of the IR... currently be used to increase the density of the IR portion of the lot, and only the IR portion of the lot. It is important to note that the current rule also places all of the density on the generally smaller, if you look, the IR portion is the darker portion, and the yellow portion is the RRA portion. So if you can see some of those lots there, you can see that there's quite a few with a big portion that's yellow on the slide, and a small portion that's brown. So it basically allows you to take the entire density of that entire lot that very often is more in the RRA side, and use it towards building on the much smaller IR side, which ends up giving you a much higher density in the IR portion than you would normally have anywhere else in town. If you note, most of those lots there that have that big portion like that are right in the High Street historic area. A good portion of them are on State Highway. There are a lot of issues that could happen if this footnote was actually used to build. So, and here's why. A single-family house in the RRA district requires two acres. A two-family requires three acres. No family, multifamily units are allowed by right in the RRA. A single-family in the IR requires just a half, a quarter acre, while a two-family requires just over a quarter of an acre. But for multifamily units, a density bonus that's in the regulations allows for density of up to 12 units per acre. If, under the current loophole, say a lot is one-third in IR and two-thirds in the RRA, you can essentially have 12 units on that third, a third of an acre of land, which is equivalent of 36 units per acre in the historic district. The total number of parcels zoned as split IRR/RA are 59. Of those, 40 are single-family homes, 15 are two-family, two are three-family, one parcel is a four-family. One parcel is Ipswich Inn, and then there's one parcel, there's actually two parcels with a single-family home. That's ours. So multi-unit, multi-units more than two families in any of these split-lot districts are pretty rare. I mean, there's only one four, there's a handful of threes. The character of the neighborhood is not, you know, very densely built developments, it's more towards a rural town that we are. It doesn't appear that any properties have leveraged loophole yet, but there is currently one proposal for 83 High Street that has brought this particular zoning issue to our attention. I believe making these changes right now are critically important due to the recent increases in development that we've seen in our town, and the pressures it's going to put on infrastructure, on parking, and just all kinds of resources and traffic in the town. But also, the streetscape of High Street, which is very unique, will be significantly impacted if we allow these to be built. The one other thing that happens is, if these become development parcels, then they're going to be sold as development parcels, most likely. Anybody that owns one, that turns around and decides to sell their house, is going to look for that extra $200,000 or $300,000 from a developer that will come in and develop these, and will lose a streetscape that's very unique. And I don't think the neighbors around there greatly will support this either, this type of a development. And I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Al. That was a mouthful, you did a good job. Whatever. So, the Finance Committee's recommendation?
Yep. The Finance Committee unanimously supports this article. We had a good deal of time with Mr. Boynton on this article, and he was able to go into detail to answer our questions. We agree that this article fixes a loophole or an unintended consequence of our current zoning. The developmental aspect of these lots in the historic and in-town residential area gave us great concern, as the density allowances that we could see if this loophole were not closed could have a dramatic and permanent impact on our historic district. We further believe that by doing this, we are taking a reasonable step by limiting it to the IR district and allowing for others outside of the district in mixed-use lots to continue with the current zoning. So again, the Finance Committee unanimously supports this and encourages town meeting to do the same.
Thank you. And I would like to recognize Keith Anderson, Chair of the Planning Board, for their recommendation.
The Planning Board voted three to two to oppose the citizens' petition. The homes in the town's historic High Street area are indeed precious and irreplaceable. They are important to the town's character, history, tourism, housing inventory, and so on. The Planning Board agrees fully with this assessment, and further also agrees that density is an important factor in any neighborhood. As Mr. Boynton states, there are lots split between the in-town residence zoning district, the IR, and the rural residence Area A zoning district, the RRA. These are all, these are located along High Street, continuing onto East Street, also along Farley Avenue, and in a few other scattered locations like Highland and Ward Street. Though certainly the area, as Mr. Boynton pointed out, the most relevant to this petition is indeed the High Street, East Street lots, given the ratios in which these lots are split. There are approximately 60 such lots in Ipswich, across Ipswich, that have portions in both the IR and the RRA. And of those, about 35 are also in the Architectural Preservation District. And if we consider frontage and lot width requirements and things of that nature, the actual number that could be developed is less, perhaps closer to actually 15. As the bylaw is written currently, the number of units allowed to be built in the IR portion of the lot can be calculated not only by taking the lot square footage located in the IR portion, but in certain cases by also adding the same lot's square footage located in the RRA portion. The result is greater density than is ordinarily permissible. It should be noted that a developer could ask for added units under the special permit process using various footnotes. Special permit applications require public hearings, butter notifications, peer review of drainage, consideration of traffic and parking, and consistency with neighborhood character, to name just a few considerations. In other words, this added density is not allowed by right, and the public has a voice. Board members voting in support of the petition feel the proposal will accomplish the goal of limiting density of multifamily developments, particularly along High Street and East Street, where the current dominant use is single-family homes with land running uphill behind the dwellings. Given the historic nature of many of these potentially affected lots, the goal of limiting density is seen as desirable and worthy of consideration. Members who are supportive added two requirements. One, that the motion state explicitly that the change applies to lots specifically split between the IR and the RRA. The reason for asking for that was so that commercial zones would not be impacted by unintended consequences. And two, that the legality of the proposal be confirmed by town council. As you saw with the main motion, both requests have been met. Those Planning Board members opposed to the petition feel that a way to accomplish the same goal needs further consideration, as there are many potential models for handling split-lot zoning, including our current bylaw, which despite some comments that we've just heard, excuse me, just heard, is actually not a loophole. It is simply another approach, one approach, to handling split-lot zoning. Those members also feel that the zoning bylaw already gives the Planning Board sufficient regulatory tools to control density through its special permit process, complete with hearings, which I just noted a moment ago. And lastly, the process in this case seemed rushed, and all potential ramifications needed to be carefully considered. Again, the Planning Board's recommendation is three opposed and two in support of the citizens' petition, which is Article 20. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll go to debate, two minutes per debate. Does anyone care to be heard, pro or con? Mr. Gardner.
Carl Gardner, Nine Wood Lane. I ask town meeting to please vote no on Article 20. A fair and reasonable analysis of actual conditions in the historic High Street corridor illustrates the very limited potential for additional multifamily special permit proposals in that part of our central village. Let's sort out the facts from the fear. Only a selected few properties meet the criteria as viable split-lot expanded-use scenarios, as many do not have the required geometry, including a 90-foot lot minimum width at the building setback. More importantly, the terrain of many lots rises abruptly behind the existing homes. Unfortunately, we don't have a plan available this evening, or I thought the Planning Board was going to present a better plan that shows the structures and the topography, but that's not available. This represents an insurmountable physical barrier against any potential use of these steeply sloping areas, even within the IR portion of the lots. These factors leave only a handful of parcels with any practical potential for future special permit requests. There's not going to be a run-on development in this area. This provision's been in existence since 1994, and this is, to my knowledge, the first proposal of its kind. It's also critical to realize that no multifamily proposal is by right. Each must negotiate a multi-layered special permit process with broad Planning Board discretion to govern the siding, design, and yes, even the density. Substantial input is routinely sought from the Design Review Board. In this area, the applicant must also gain approval from the Architectural Preservation District Commission. As a community, we need to preserve limited options such as this to locate additional dwelling units properly designed and sited within our village center, where they belong.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired. Sir, name and address, please.
John Fisk, 12 Wall Street, and I'm Chair of the Historical Commission. I'd like to give a little bit of historical background to why High Street is the unique street in America. In 1635, the General Court of Massachusetts passed a law saying that all dwellings in Massachusetts should be built within half a mile of the meeting house. At that time, Ipswich had a policy of attracting new settlers by offering them two lots, an agricultural lot, or planting lot, as they called it, outside the town, and a house lot inside the town. House lots vary--
Excuse me, Mr. Fisk, I appreciate, I'm an avid history fan, but time is short. Can you tell us about this first? Tell us why we should vote.
As well as your opinion.
Go ahead, sir.
This is absolutely relevant to the, to the motion on the floor. Please extend my clock for your interruption.
Yeah, go ahead, sir. Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. The only way to obey both these laws, the town policy and the Massachusetts general law, was to cluster houses closely together within half a mile of the meeting house, and to get the housing lots between a half and two acres was to have long, narrow lots going up behind them. The law, the Massachusetts law, was rescinded in 1640 because most towns did not obey it, and it was almost unenforceable. Ipswich was not a Scoff law. As a result, we have the only 17th-century first settler structure of a town.
Thank you. I gave you an extra 15 seconds. Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to be heard? Sir?
Good evening. My name is Tom Mayo. I live at 180 Argilla Road, and I am an, I'm the architect for the proposed housing project to be located at 83 High Street, the site of the former Kilgore Cabinet Shop and Home. Our project would be directly affected by this proposed zoning change. We have been working on this project for about a year now, adhering to the requirements of the current zoning bylaw, which by the way, has been in place since 1993, and seems to have been working okay since then to control density and preserve historic character of High Street. We have developed our proposed design in coordination with the Ipswich Planning Department, the Planning Board, the Design Review Board, and the Architectural Preservation District Commission, working with their suggestions in accordance with the existing town review process. We are extremely aware of the historic significance of the High Street area, and our designs are respective of this. We are preparing, we're proposing to restore the historic Kimball House and also add another seven units that are designed in first-period-style homes. To have this citizens' petition filed only recently in the middle of our town-required permitting process seemed extremely unfair and a bit underhanded, since if this petition is approved, it would mean that even though we've fulfilled all the rules, or followed all the rules, we would have to scrap a year's worth of work and start the process all over again. The petitioner is concerned that everyone along High Street would immediately start developing huge projects, but in reality, this has not been the case, and no such proposals have been come forward since 1993. Of the 80 properties within the High Street Architectural Preservation District, 27 contains the split between IR and RRA. Of those 27, only 10 properties, including ours--
Thank you. Thank you very much. You've exceeded your time. Anyone else care to be heard?
I didn't cut, the gentleman deferred to me.
Would you like--
I would just like to, journey's off, Renesek Road. I just want to throw a couple of words together for you folks. Planning Board, Leimbruck Road, Locust Street, Blaisdell Terrace, Brunies, Town Farm Road. Let's tighten up what we have here and support Mr. Boynton's article. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please don't clap, please don't applaud, that's totally inappropriate. Mr. Gard, do you have a question?
Mr. Moderator, in fairness, I would ask that at least 15 seconds be given to all future speakers--
Nope.
More than the three minutes allowed because of the--
Nope.
Mr. Fisk--
Nope. Two minutes, that's my call. My responsibility is to determine all questions of order. We're short on time here. Does anyone else care to be heard? Sir? Did you want to speak?
Matthew Cummings. I live at 85 Central Street. I own Cummings Architects. I moved here to Ipswich to save first-period homes. We spent a lot of years doing that, donated a lot of my time towards saving the homes on the street. I'd have to say that we work with two or three developers in town that do wonderful work. We restored some houses on the High Street itself, for instance. Those particular developers, those two or three we've worked with, we've looked at these lots, you can develop the lots that can be changed to six, 10, 12 units. How you do that is you go to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board will approve particular things through special permit, town vote, and so forth. It will happen. The lots will be developed. Is it five years from now, 10 years from now? The single-family homes, we turn it to two-family homes, once they're approved. So we've been, we've reviewed these lots and seen them, and I know that they can be developed. There's one being proposed right now. It's a matter of how the economy does. The economy's doing great. So which lot's next, and which one's after that? So I hope you vote in favor of Mr. Boynton's proposal in order to avoid this from happening to one of the most important streets in our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Okay, so we'll go to a vote. All right? This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please--
Mr. Moderator.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Name an address, please.
83 High Street. I am Mike Becker, the owner of 83 High Street. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My property, 83 High Street, which this petition is directly aimed at. This change actually only legitimately affects about 10 lots. Mr. Boynton refers to this as a loophole, but it's not, it's just the current zoning. The current zoning has been in place for over 25 years, and up until a couple of years ago, the density allowed was actually double what it is currently. There was no rush to develop these parcels, even when much more density was allowed. We purchased this property about a year ago, and we've been going through the various boards to get our project approved. The neighborhood is overseen by the Architectural Preservation District Commission, and the project also requires Design Review Board and Planning Board approval. These boards will not allow something they don't feel is appropriate. Our proposal includes restoration of the existing house. It's by no means an easy process to get approval. We've been working on this for the better part of a year, and the design professionals on the Design Review Board have already approved our previous design. We've since reduced the size based on feedback from the APDC. We are currently working with the Planning Board for approval. I don't think it's fair to improve, impose this change after almost a year and close to $100,000 invested in mortgage payments, insurance, test pits, architecture-- invested in mortgage payments, insurance, test pits, architecture, survey, engineers, and other costs, and also the fact that we bought the property and paid what we paid based on the current zoning. We've also spent an enormous amount of time and energy to get the project this far. These are multiple boards in place to limit our project. We aren't asking for any variance. There's no zoning relief needed. The aforementioned boards have the expertise to oversee these projects and have already spent considerable time doing so. There's no guarantee that our project will be approved. It's only fair that we should let the boards do their job, and if they don't approve our project, then so be it.
Thank you.
How would any of you feel if the zone-
Thank you, sir. You're out of order. Thank you. Okay?
Gordon Harris, 17 Mill Road, Historical Commission. Last night, the Historical Commission voted unanimously in support of this motion. High Street in particular is unique to America, has the greatest concentration of first-period houses in America, is what makes Ipswich unique outside of having a great beach. We have these two incredible resources. I think just the discussion we've had tonight shows that rather than waiting for each board in succession to evaluate and decide what Ipswich should be, whether we should allow this type of development, we have an opportunity here tonight to make that decision for ourselves.
Thank you. Mr. Savoy.
Ken Savoy, Old England Road. I have one question. I don't believe that this motion was seconded.
It was seconded.
It was? All right. I stand corrected. I oppose this motion for the simple reason that I think it represents a taking. Imagine you had a property that you purchased, and you had the ability to count a portion of it towards development, but now a rule has changed that eliminates any use of that property for development. And although the Planning Board recognizes that some consideration of density ought to be reviewed, I think this is an extreme measure to not allow any use of a significant portion of the property towards development. And therefore, I suggest that this be continued to allow the Planning Board to study it further, and if they feel that further density reduction should be made, it be done through the Planning Board process in conjunction with our master plan. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone have anything new to add? Sir, if you want to speak, please come down to the microphone. Is that new? Okay, so this is the last speaker.
I live on High Street. I have my family on High Street.
You need to speak into the microphone, sir.
Yeah. I'm concerned about the change in structure of High Street, and that this bill is going to protect High Street. It's not for us to grant our power to the Select Board or anyone else. We get to choose here how we want High Street to be. High Street is a jewel in the crown. These homes are built of white oak. They're going to outlast all the other homes that they try to stick in there. If you've ever walked down through Lord Square, be very careful. I encourage you to wear bright orange. Air horns in your pocket would be helpful. Don't trust the crosswalks. Don't trust cars turning left across 1A, because they could kill you, and I know this. So I encourage you to vote. Take the power back from the Select Board on this and the Planning Board. Don't let them make choices like that. We own this town, and that section of High Street is a beautiful section of High Street. Those rural lots going up against the cemetery on the right-hand side of High Street, it's a beautiful area. And what I would like to do is encourage the town to think about restoring High Street to what it was before the bridge went in and before that section of 1A became a killing field.
Thank you, sir. No, please, don't applaud. Don't applaud. Okay, so we're going to go to a vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the main motion under Article 20, please raise your cards. And those opposed? I declare a passes by a two-thirds vote. Article 21. Mr. Boynton. Mr. Boynton. Let's go. Let's go.
Seven voters to stand to question the vote, please, so we can go use our electronic system.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay? We'll go to the clickers. This is 21. Yep. All right, we'll give you a time. So we're going to vote for 21, 20, excuse me, electronically.
20.
20, correct. Okay, all those in favor, please press 1. All those opposed, please press 2. Okay, give him 10 seconds. And the vote is 162 in favor, 33 opposed. I declare the motion carries by two-thirds vote. Okay. Article 21, Mr. Boynton.
Article 21. Increase in parking requirement for residents to two spaces from one and a half. I move to amend the Ipswich zoning bylaws set forth in Article 21 of the warrant, which states-
No, just read the motion. Just read the motion for the warrant for this town meeting.
The motion? Just read that motion?
Yep.
Okay. I moved to amend the Ipswich zoning bylaws as set forth in Article 21 of the warrant for this town meeting. That's it.
Okay. Is there a second? Hold, sir. Hold on one second. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Skelton. Okay.
Okay. Summary. These changes to the zoning bylaws will set the standard for two spaces per unit for residential units as opposed to the current one and a half spaces. It applies only to residents. It does not apply to ends, B&amp;Bs, businesses, churches, assisted living, facilities, schools, government buildings, or anything that isn't a residence. Currently, the average number of cars per household in Ipswich is two. It doesn't cover boats, guests, or anything else, just what the household has itself. While we would set the units, or should I say, the parking spaces per unit to two, there is room in the parking density right now by special permit to reduce that by 50%. I'm not asking for that to change. That means that if somebody has a good reason, while they really, that is a benefit to the town and community to only have one parking space, they can get a special permit and get it reduced. I believe by saying the default to be two spaces, that we're basically going to change the way we look at it. It's not going to increase the amount of cars that we have. It's going to decrease the congestion that we have. If you go down, if, just take a drive up Brownville Ave., anytime, any day, and try to go side-by-side with somebody else, it's not possible. It's a one-way street. It's actually dangerous to fire trucks. You know, Brownville's one street, Manning's a street, Mineral's a street, go into Brown Square, take a look through the town and just think about all the narrow streets we have in town. We're not a town built with wide streets. We're not made to have both sides of the street lined with parking. We're really made to, you know, provide parking in the cases where we've had historic houses that had no parking in some cases, like the neighborhood behind the commuter rail. There's instances where people have no parking at all, you know? And we have that provided now, but to build more and say we're only going to provide less than the average amount of spaces per unit seems to me to be reckless, and it's a path we're on, and it seems that we have more and more congestion, more and more parking conflicts, and more and more accidents from cars being in the way, pedestrians not being seen. And we're not Cambridge. I mean, we're not a place where you can say, "We're going to try and have less spaces because everybody can walk somewhere. Walk to Shaw's." You know? Walk to go shopping. There's no shopping in town to speak of. You know, even the restaurants, you know? Walk to all the restaurants. It depends on where you live. We are a rural town, and rural towns have cars, and to not put spaces for those cars is, to me, just seems to be a mistake in the way that we're moving. I ask you to support this and try to, at least going forward, prevent more parking congestion and more parking conflict in this town. Thank you.
Okay. We'll hear from the, it's a change in the board endorsements here. The Select Board is one in favor, three opposed. FinCom is three in favor, sorry, six in favor, one opposed. Planning Board is zero in favor, five opposed. That's correct, Keith?
That is correct.
Okay. Ms. Skelton from the FinCom, please.
Thank you. Janice Clement-Skelton, Finance Committee.
Rockstar, rockstar, rockstar.
My apologies. The Finance Committee voted to support this article by a vote of six to one. In looking at recent development in town, it's become, in our humble opinion, abundantly clear that very few of our homes are one-car homes. We looked at this amendment or to the bylaws from the perspective of public safety and the on-street parking, as well as a more realistic approach to development. As Mr. Boynton pointed out, it's very, very unusual these days for any family to be one-car. And although we like to discuss having walkable downtown, at this point in time, there's not a lot to walk to. So we support this article by a vote of six to one and encourage you to do the same.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson for Finance, the Planning Board report.
Keith Anderson, 14 Manning Street, Chair of the Planning Board. The Planning Board collectively believes that parking is an important and timely issue and agrees with the petitioner that the issue requires renewed consideration, especially in areas such as the IR and downtown, but disagree that a blanket town-wide, one-size-fits-all change is appropriate. We believe the change removes flexibility, as well as negatively and disproportionately affects some types of developments such as small units downtown where one parking space is very appropriate, or two-family and multifamily developments. You will likely hear several comments tonight about parking issues around town, and in fact, have already heard in places like Brownville Avenue. We do not discount that these are important, and we do not discount that they are real. However, it is important to note that this proposed change will not do anything, nothing, to help existing parking problems. The Planning Board's position is that parking as a whole requires a much more detailed assessment and needs to involve various entities, including planning, but also the Police Department, the DPW, the Select Board, and perhaps others. In fact, some of this work is well underway for the immediate downtown with the Parking Task Force. Again, we agree that parking is worthy of reassessment, but that parking requirements should be looked at in each zoning district for each type of development. Perhaps instead of being linked to the number of dwelling units, we should consider the number of bedrooms to determine parking spaces, should consider the number of bedrooms to determine parking space requirements as a new approach. For example, a one-bedroom and a four-bedroom dwelling currently have the same parking requirement. Does that still make sense? Should we consider requiring electric vehicle charging stations? Could we even look at eliminating minimums in some rare instances? The Planning Board has wanted to take this matter up for some time, and it is the Board's intention to explore recommendations related to parking for this year's Fall Town Meeting. We expect to be here in October with a comprehensive recommendation, which we definitely invite the petitioner to participate in crafting. For these reasons, the Planning Board is zero to five unanimously opposed, and ask you to vote no on Article 21.
Thank you. Anyone care to be heard?
Yes.
Yep, okay. So, and who's in favor?
I'm in favor.
In favor, okay. Ms. Alexson?
Thank you.
Two minutes.
Linda Alexson.
Two minutes.
I lived on Brownville Avenue for 14 years before I moved to my current home, so I speak from experience about living in the IR district. Common sense should dictate here. When planning new developments, especially in the IR district, adequate onsite parking must be included. Overflow parking on narrow roads in tightly-packed neighborhoods creates safety issues when vehicles are parked on both sides of the street, not leaving enough space for pedestrians, moving vehicles, or first responders to pass safely. 1.5 vehicles is inadequate and makes no sense. Nobody owns half a vehicle. Round it up to two and require those spaces to be provided. This is at least reasonable. The Planning Board wants to study this further, but in the meantime, projects are going to be built that will be detrimental to the neighborhoods and to the community. I don't need to study this further to know that this article provides a simple and reasonable solution to a serious concern.
Okay. Mr. Schaaf.
Michael Schaaf, Finance Committee. I rise to urge you to oppose this article for a couple of reasons. One, I think the Planning Board is very persuasive. It sweeps everything together, and clearly, different-sized units need different amounts of parking. We have a changing household pattern in this country and in this town, and a studio apartment is not a three- or four-bedroom house and should have differing parking requirements. I suggest that we indeed provide time for the Planning Board to study this further and to provide recommendations to the town meeting. Secondly, we should be aware that requirements like this do affect development costs. We've heard frequently that we need more affordable housing in this town. Parking costs money. We ought not to, I think, impose unnecessary parking. Indeed, if it's necessary and appropriate, I support it, but the sweeping petition before us could and very likely result in unnecessary parking development and an increase in costs. I urge you to oppose it.
Name and address.
Kathleen Spinelli, 27 Pleasant Street. I have been at that address for 21 years, and I have been attending Planning Board meetings and other meetings and heard about how they were going to address parking, and it's gotten kicked down the road every single year. They're welcome to bring it to Fall Meeting. This will give us a stopgap in the meantime. In my humble opinion, Article 21 is perhaps one of the best examples of common sense this voter has seen in a while. This may seem like something that will only bring relief to one area of town, but as developers target other areas and look to use mechanisms currently available to them, cluster zoning, density bonuses, and more, the small protection this will provide current residents is immeasurable. I'd also like to make a note, there was currently, at one of our last town meetings, we did infill voting, and we all approved it because that was going to bring small, affordable houses to the IR. And I don't know who considers a four-bedroom, two-bath, $635,000 home as affordable in the IR, but whoever that is, there's a bridge in Brooklyn that's for sale, from what I hear. The reality is this, we are a town. We are not the city of Beverly or Salem or even Cambridge, despite the inclination of some to compare us to them. Town of Ipswich encompasses 42.5 square miles. The town of Ipswich does not have a public transportation system readily available, other than the train that has one stop in Ipswich. Instead, we have cars, and trucks, and boats, and campers, and landscaping trailers and motorcycles, and visiting nurses, and home health aides, and in-laws, and friends. The average home, regardless of whether you're talking about Ed Street or Brownville Avenue or the neck or outer Linebrook, has a minimum of two cars. Two, not one and a half. Just consider your own neighborhood for a moment, because yes, the IR is significantly overwhelmed, but this could be anywhere that a developer walks in, buys the house next to you, and expands it. They are only required to give one and a half spaces.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Spinelli. Mr. Gibbs.
Glenn Gibbs, Town Planner. A couple of things I just-
Are you still a town planner?
For a few more weeks.
Few more weeks, okay.
I think one thing that's worth pointing out is that the requirement, this is a minimum parking requirement, the 1.5. It doesn't mean that that's what gets established at any point. It's just, it has to be at least that amount. It does not prevent the Planning Board from requiring more spaces when they're required, and there have been projects that the Planning Board has required more than 1.5 because they thought it was necessary. There have been also some cases where because of the nature of the project, where it seemed it could be less than even the 1.5, then that is done. So it, keeping in mind, this is a minimum, and also that the projects that are keep getting referred to, multifamily projects, you cannot build multifamily in this town by right. You have to go to the Planning Board, and it has to be reviewed on a case-by-case, and the Board determines whether or not the spaces that they're offering are adequate. One thing that's not been mentioned at all, if you put a minimum of two spaces in every situation, well, you're contributing to adding more asphalt to, I've seen cases where lawns have become asphalt because they needed that to provide the parking. That's, if you need to do that- needed that to provide the parking. That's, if you need to do that, okay, but if you're providing for more spaces than you actually need, because we have a rigid and inflexible requirement that it has to be two in every instance, it's, it doesn't make sense and I strongly urge people to vote against this.
Okay. Sir?
Ted Spinelli, 27 Pleasant Street. I just want to raise the point that two spots as a minimum, if they had been in place while these recent 4DB developments were proposed, they would have had to meet the minimum parking requirement. And perhaps both of these, or all three of these 4DB developments would not have been as large as have been proposed. Also, over the past seven to 10 years, there's been tweaks to the in-town zoning issue in a direct effort to increase density in the in-town zone. I've heard it from people, from boards on the stage, I've heard it from boards over here. That seems to be the purpose of what's taking place in town. We need some protection in the in-town district. Please put this in place today. I will gladly take part in your process to bring something back in the Fall, but we need some protections today.
Okay. Someone move the question? Second. Okay. This requires a two-thirds vote to stop the debate. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Someone called the question? Nope, someone called the question?
No, it does not.
If you're in favor of stopping debate, please raise your cards. And those opposed? I declare the motion carries. So, we'll go to a vote. The vote is on the main motion under Article 21, to amend the bylaws to change parking from one and a half to two. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? Let's go to the clickers. Okay. Can you get a slide up? Okay, voting's open. Press one for yes, two for no. Okay, we'll give you 10 seconds. Mark, 10 seconds to vote. Okay, I declare the motion fails, 103 to 85, because it was a two-thirds vote. Okay, Article 22, disposition of land, Mr. Gibbs.
I move to authorize the Select Board to dispose of a 69,696-square-foot parcel identified as Successors Map 49, Lot 2, as set forth in Article 22 of the warrant for this town meeting.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Mr. Wood. Okay, Mr. Gibbs, please.
As is stated in the packet, the warrant that you have, this issue came about because some years ago, not a couple of years ago, I guess, the town, the owner of this property, over I wrote, attempted to transfer it to the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, but because of a Scrivener's error, one of the properties that was supposed to be transferred was not. And so, the state approached the town and asked that this parcel, which because it had, the owner had stopped paying taxes because they thought, they thought the property was going to the state, became a tax title. We took ownership of it. And now the state has come and said, "Look, we'd like to have this because this is something that the owner intended to give to us all along." The Land Disposition Committee looked at this, did not see any purpose for the town to hold this land. It's unbuildable, it's inaccessible, and the feeling is that it would be of greater benefit to the town if it were joined with other lands in the Willowdale State Forest that are owned by the town and allow this property to go to the state as the owner had originally intended. So, that's why we're making this article and why we're recommending support, Planning Board's recommending support. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Schaaf.
Thank you. Michael Schaaf, Finance Committee. The Finance Committee supported this Article 5 to 2.
Yeah.
But it did so with some ambivalence. If you read the report, I'm sure you all have read the report, that the ambivalence concerned the fact that the town and the state do swap land occasionally, especially conservation-related land. For example, when we developed the turbines, it was necessary to swap some land because it was taken out of the conservation use for the turbines. So, these things do occur and it certainly would be useful if we could kind of bank credit for this swap so that we, downstream, if we need it, we could utilize it. We do support it and it's best managed as part of Willowdale State Forest.
Thank you. And the Select Board is unanimously in favor. Mr. Howe, you have a question?
If this, yes, I do have a question. Thank you.
Yes.
If this land goes to the state, it's, what's its likelihood of preservation versus development?
For its development?
Preservation versus development.
Glenn, I don't think it's developable. Is that correct, Glenn?
Yes, it would be made part of the Willowdale State Forest. The state wants it not to develop it, but to maintain it as part of the.
Right. It's wildland. Okay, so, I happen to know that there is a motion to amend the main motion under this. So, let's go to the next slide. Mr. Engel has moved to amend it to add a couple provisions, but he is supplementing his amendment with two words that we're going to put in there. Thank you.
Jim Engel, 362 Linebrook Road. I move to amend the main motion by adding the following condition to the disposal of the parcel referred to in the main motion, "And the disposition is accomplished by way of a land swap with Commonwealth or the release by the Commonwealth of restrictions on town-owned land of similar size or value." Next slide, please.
One second. Is there a second? Mr. Wood, a second.
The genesis for this amendment really started with the Finance Committee. Sitting with the Finance Committee during their hearing on this article, Mr. Fay was the first to suggest that perhaps we should be getting something in return for this land. As you read the main motion, we give the land to the state, we get nothing back. Land has value and I think that we've, those of us who have been trying to cite facilities, recognize just how valuable public land is. So, even though this is a small piece of land, it's only 1.6 acres, I think the principle is important here. My notion here is that we should condition this transfer, as I have suggested in the amendment, and that we anticipate potential municipal or school uses. What might they be? We're desperately looking for sites for renewable energy facilities, solar farms, that sort of thing. And every time we look at land, there's some condition on it or some reason why we can't use it. There's a potential for possibly swapping this land for some land within Willowdale where we might develop a well site, because currently, if we go for municipal wells, all of the state-owned land is off limits. We have no ability to explore for water on state-owned land. We're anticipating a conversation about expanding our reservoirs. If we expand our reservoirs, we're going to need to replace certain parts, certain land that will be flooded by the increased reservoir. So, we need to look for some kind of a land swap. I would even imagine that farmland expansion could benefit from some sort of a land swap. And you know, we have a school that abuts Willowdale and I can imagine that for programmatic needs, that some additional land added to that school site might be very useful. So, I sit here, or stand here, and the opposition, because I think it should be opposed without this amendment. But if you were to approve this amendment, then I would certainly endorse the article. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone care to be heard on Mr. Engel's, can we go back, Mark, to the, yeah, that's what's before you all, Mr. Engel's motion to amend the main motion. Sir? Yep.
Yeah, what's the question? So, I guess the question is, what sort of timeframe, you know, is this a sort of property that they're looking to give it now to get to the town?
Yeah, and what he wants to do is just add this condition to the sale with no time. It doesn't have to be within 30 days.
I guess the question comes in then, when would the state have, the Commonwealth have to give this back to us?
I'm suggesting we never give it to them in the first place.
Until they have property to give back.
Until we have a swap arrangement in place. That's what the amendment does.
Whoever's the real estate transaction. Okay, so, let's go to a vote. Oh, yeah, Mr. Moreno.
Anthony Moreno, Town Manager. I just wanted to clarify for town meeting that what Mr. Engel is suggesting is certainly valuable and will definitely benefit the town, but the town meeting needs to understand that that will take an act of a legislature. We'd have to identify a parcel that we want and then the state would have to approve it. I was just talking to Town Council, who's been through this a few times, and some of the parcels that he's been through took up to seven years for this to happen. So, I want to remind everybody what Mr. Gibbs said in the beginning. This land, the original owner of this land meant to give it to DCR. That didn't happen due to a paperwork error. We're just looking to correct that error. While I certainly merit in that, and what the original conversation with Mr. Fay at FINCOM was, was to try to get a letter from DCR acknowledging that we gave them the land so we could possibly use that as a chip in the future or a possibility of, you know, for negotiating in the future. So, I just wanted to clarify that for the town meeting. Thank you.
Okay, so, we'll go to a vote on the motion to amend, which requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? I declare them, well, we'll go to the clickers. We got them, right? Okay. Can you get a slide up? And while that's, they're getting that up, Mr. Kraft, it's now 10:57, Mr. Kraft wisely reminded me that we have a bylaw that says we're leaving in three minutes unless there's a motion to finish the warrant or go to a time certain. And Mr. Kraft's motion is to stay until we finish the warrant and there are three more articles. Seconded by everybody on the stage, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I declare the motion carries. Okay, so now, we're going to Mr. Engel's motion to amend the main motion under Article 22, to add an additional condition to the sale. All those in favor, please press one. Those opposed, press two. 10 seconds, Mark. Five, four, three, two, one. Okay, I declare the motion fails, 66 to 72. Okay, so now we'll go to the main motion. Oh, sir? Yep, you're not getting any volume there.
Hello?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Yeah, Tom Canary, 90 Central Street. Just a quick question. Any land we transfer to the state this way, do we get anything back in the way of payment in lieu of taxes or anything like that from that land?
I don't think so. Do we? Yeah. Yeah. Let's get some legal advice.
The state does pay, each town has a portion of its budget to pay for state-owned lands. I suspect on an acre and a half piece of state forest property, that would be a very small amount, but it would be something.
Okay, so, let's go to a vote on the main motion, which is unamended, whether or not to put this deal through. It's a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. And those opposed? I declare the motion carries by majority vote. 23, Mr. Gogan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Phil Gogan, Kingfisher Road.
Can you read, Phil, can you read the screen itself or?
I've got one. I'll give the generic one for this. That's, thank you. I made the motion on Article 23, as it appears on the warrant.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there a second? Second by Linda Alexon. Okay, Mr. Gogan.
Thank you. This is the article on term limits as elected town officials. And the article is, is "Do you favor, by the town of Ipsus, of an amendment to the town's charter and bylaws, which would require town officials to be limited in the number of consecutive terms they may serve in office?"
In elective office.
Elective office. Excuse me. Folks, this is what, same thing as last year, that you voted on the ballot. And I did not speak at this last year. The, went on the ballot and the ballot results were like 1,001 to 800, something like that. What it does briefly, and we're running out of time, like Mr. Kraft said, it seeks the approval of you, the voters, to express your opinion on whether or not Ipsus should amend its charter and bylaws to establish term limits and the number of terms a person can consecutively serve without a break, serve in elective town offices. The adoption of such proposals would achieve an elective town government seat to others after an incumbent has served a number of years, like three consecutive terms. After being termed out of elective office during the two, the next two election cycles, the person could again run for reelection. What it does really is, it's opening the doors for, there are a lot, a lot of talented people in town. It's opening the doors so that they can take a chance and run for election. Right now, they're hesitant because the people that are in office have been there so long, nobody wants to run against them. We have a very good example this year. There are six people running for the Selectman's job. It's never happened. I've been in town for 58 years. I've never heard of that. So, I think it's a great, and it's not the, we're not the only town. All you have to do is go online and Google, YouTube, and plug in politicians' term elections and.
Thank you very much. Okay, does anyone want to be heard on this? All right, then we're going to go to a vote. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Those opposed? I declare the motion fails by majority vote. Article 24, Mr. Gogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Mario. This one here is.
Oh, wait, it's just, so, do you move that it be resolved by this?
Okay. I move that this be resolved by this town meeting, that it favors the adoption of the town of Ipsus of a required. of the town of Ipsus of a required quarterly internal audit of the town's account and accounting practices.
Okay, is there a second? Skelton. Okay, Mr. Gogan, got five minutes?
What this does really is, there's another way of checking on how the town is going other than once a year. Right now, there's a once-a-year audit, and it's, people sit in it for two and a half hours. The, there are going to be some changes, and they're in, in fact, they have started. We have what's called open checkbook, and you did vote on that last year also. The, what you have now is, you have to wait until end of the year to see if there's a problem, before you know if there's a problem. If it's quarterly, like the large corporations, big companies, and if you had your own company, you wouldn't want to wait until the end of the year. Quarterly, you're going to get figures and say, "Hey, wait a minute, something is wrong," and you're going to be able to catch it soon enough, and put the fire out if there is one. This is going to happen every three months, and all it's going to do is, is the people that are already working, not going to hire anybody, people who are already working are going to be checking on another department, and vice versa.
Okay, let's hear from the, well, first of all, you can see the recommendations from the various boards on the wall. Mr. Hartford from the Finance Committee?
Walter Heffler, 3 Mahone Drive. We don't think that this is necessary. We know that Sarah and Stephanie spend time every month looking over the accounts, that they reconcile the accounts every month, that Tony's on top of things. Them looking over their own work, we don't think has much value, and we don't feel that there's an internal organization such that a big company would have to come in as an independent auditor. So, the annual audit by Powers and Sullivan, augmented by the ongoing due diligence of our team in town hall, we feel sufficient.
Okay. Anyone else care to be heard? So, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of the main motion on Article 24, please raise your cards. Those opposed, I declare the motion fails. Article 25, question regarding use of inventory control, Mr. Gogan.
Thank you, Ms. Maria. I move that it be resolved by this town meeting, that it favors the addition of the town of Ipsus of inventory control software to be used in the town's, with the town's electronic data system to control and manage acquisition and disposal of all inventory procured and disposed by the town of Ipsus.
Is there a second? Ms. Skelton. Okay, Mr. Skelton, Mr. Gogan, you have five minutes?
Folks, it's just a way of controlling what comes in, where it went, and when it goes out. Right now, there is no controls of anything under $10,000. I've heard that there's a control of over $10,000. I haven't seen it yet. But it does eliminate the chance and the possibility of stuff disappearing and not knowing about it, ever. This is just a way of controlling inventory, just like the big box stores. When you go out, they got the, what they call a gizmo, or the handbar, and controlling everything that goes in. And all this is, there is a software out there that other towns have, and have been using it right along. The town auditors that go in and check these towns will recommend this particular type software. It's not expensive or easy to use. And again, this vote tonight is to express your opinion on whether or not the town should do it. It's not doing it, but you're expressing your opinion, because this is not binding. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is there a recommendation for the Finance Committee? You can see the endorsements on the board there. The select board is unanimous against it, Finance Committee is unanimous against it, School Committee, take a position. Mr. Hartford?
I think that, you know, we track up the large items. School dudes is going to be used to do that as well. And that we, unlike a big box store, we're not a sales organization. We don't have inventory that we sell. That's really the process by which inventory is tracked in most companies. So, we don't feel the need, and we feel the time. The software might not be expensive, but the labor involved in trying to do so would be prohibitive.
Okay, seeing no one approaching the microphone, go to a vote. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed, I declare the motion fails. I'll take a motion to adjourn to next week, after which we'll dissolve. Seconded, all those in favor?
Opposed.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Thank you very much for coming, and thank you all for staying so late. Please be sure to put your clickers in the blue boxes as you go outside. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.